We will now open the regular Board of Selectmen's meeting for October 11th, 2020.
August, Mr. Chair, August 11.
What did I say, November?
No, you said October.
October. It happens if I try to walk and chew gum at the same time. Oh, boy. All right. It's been a long day. I'll read the tentative agenda. Seven o'clock, now 7:05, we'll have community input. 7:05, the LEPC update. 7:15, appointment of new employees. 7:30, review of the fall special town meeting warrant articles. Eight o'clock, discussion of the Highland Building with the Municipal Facilities Committee. 8:30, continued Board of Selectmen fiscal 21 goals and liaison assignments. The nine o'clock item that's on the agenda has been deferred. Those are zoning board of appeal. We may have other appointments, however. 9:15, Town Administrators Report. 9:25, Liaison Reports. 9:35, Approval of Minutes. And tentatively, 9:45, Adjournment. So let me start. Is there any community input this evening? I don't, you know, any person of the public I see on the screen is, I believe, is the mosquito.
Jerry, Jerry Lerman is there.
Jerry, I don't see him.
Oh, he's here.
Oh, there he is.
He's waving.
Oh, Jerry, okay. Any input, Jerry? You're muted, Jerry. You're muted.
There it goes.
Hi, I'm waiting for the agenda item on the Highland Building.
Okay, thank you. All right, hearing no community input. Let's go to the LEPC update. Chief Fisher.
Good evening, all. So the LEPC had had a few things of note. Most notably, I guess, the numbers came from the Board of Health. I think while Carlisle continues to do a tremendous job and hover right at 22 cases, I would highlight one thing that was brought to our attention by Linda Fantasia, and that is that of our last few cases in July and August, a good number of them, five specifically, are young people in the upper teen category. And she did highlight that and brought to our attention that, you know, this is, this is part of the state model. Some of the things they're seeing nationally that young people are getting infected. And that her concern and everyone's concern is that this could then be brought to other people who are more vulnerable. So just as a report out, we did take a couple of those things in mind from the LEPC when we were looking at other items like athletic events and athletic competitions in Carlisle. So a few other things that were brought to, brought to light by Board of Health is they're already starting to think about and plan for really big things that we normally do in the fall, like our flu clinic, when, when she facilitates vaccinating up to 100 people for flu. And then, you know, so how does that, what's that look like in Carlisle now when, geez, we're still trying to battle the pandemic, yet we need to also, also. So she's really been proactive in in starting to get the conversations going around planning for some other important events. So that was brought up. Planning around a few community events was brought up, and we feel pretty, pretty good about those events, including a concert this Friday night, St. Irene's. I won't steal the fire from Joan because she's here, but Council on Aging got their exercise classes going. They have an excellent plan about, you know, helping populations that use exercise and activities for seniors in Carlisle. They've done a fantastic job. I think the LEPC was very excited to learn about both that these programs are picking up, as well as the fact that they're being safely planned around. So I have hats off to Joan and her folks at COA. The Carlisle Neighbor Response Team continues to do fantastic work. Food's going to be available in the school program through August. She said several young people. Laurie said several young people sign up to help out that are going to be working remotely as college students. I guess a good amount of the time was also spent hearing from Jim O'Shea, just kind of the 10,000-foot view and some of the things that they've been looking at. Their, their back-to-school task force has been looking at. Clearly, it's in the very near future, they're going to come out with their full plan for getting Carlisle back to school. But just listening to all the things that they've considered was, was very impressive, and their group really seems to have a good handle on the numbers, issues, tipping points. I think the LEPC as a group was was very impressed and really felt for the position that that group is in, that these are very difficult times, and planning for our youngest residents is just, is critically important. But I think members of the LEPC, if I could, and half of them are here, I think we were, we were really impressed with the lengths that they're going to consider keeping our young people safe. And I think from, and I guess I throw also that activities are increasing at the library at a very appropriate pace. More access, more activities. Really good stuff's happening around Carlisle in a very safe manner, I think it would be. But I guess also the LEPC as a group asked me to also remind everyone, as we always do, it's only because of the diligence of our residents that we've been able to keep so many, that they've been able to keep. Our town has been able to keep so many people safe, that we're really doing it well. And that we need to keep on keeping on, unfortunately. I think probably some of you saw, I saw the front page story on the, of the Washington Post today, where they're calling it now COVID exhaustion, just everyone's so tired of this constant planning and thinking about it. And I thought it hit some of the highlights and, you know, that we see around Carlisle, that, you know, while people may be a hair more grouchy than they normally are, just because of all this planning and being cooped up, but I think that's, anybody else in the LEPC want to weigh in on anything I missed? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alan, we can't hear you.
One of the things that we have to keep in mind is that while they may not seem related at first glance, things like the sports programs in town and that sort of thing really are geared toward the idea that we want to have the school ready to open if it can, and that we want to keep the kids as close to home as we can, so they don't get out there exposed or contact. Tracing is a real problem. We want to keep your cohorts relatively small. And so they're, they're making decisions which affect the sports teams, which really are geared toward making the opening, the potential opening of schools as an in-person option at least possible for the early part of September. And so just something to keep in mind. Thank you, Chief. Any, any questions for Chief Fisher and the LEPC? As I say, for three of us or four of us are
I do have questions.
Go ahead.
So thank you, Chief. So I've spent a lot of time sort of monitoring school committee things, obviously, and as you know, as you all know, there's a fairly deep debate about whether to open school remotely or in person or some hybrid. And some of it revolves around the criteria under which we would move from one model to another. And something I've wondered about, but I haven't gotten satisfactory answers, is why, why can't we, or what would prevent us from having our own townwide testing, other than expense? And in particular, I would be interested in testing of children and the families of children in school, because whatever model we go to, we have to monitor what the impact is. And it's more about what happens to them than what happens statewide or townwide. It's about those groups. So this may be something that, you know, we would want to bring up in a joint meeting with Board of Health. But just for whoever's on, I'd be interested in, are there impediments? Why couldn't we just begin a townwide testing protocol?
David, I did ask that at the, at the walkthrough that we had at the school last week. And the, a member of the COVID Task Force Subcommittee of the Board of Health was there who rather unequivocally said, it can't happen. The testing isn't available. We can't get it. The turnaround times are too long to make it effective. If you can't get relatively short turnarounds on the testing, it isn't worthwhile doing. So I was, it's not, let's say that it was, it was the answer from an individual, not from the Board of Health per se. But given that this person is half of the current COVID Task Force, I thought that was, that was a interesting response. They seem to be dismissing it, and whether that's appropriate or not, I don't know. But that, that seems to be the current take.
I mean, I guess I, you know, it's, I don't know where to fit it in this agenda, so I'm putting it in here. But I, I think, I think we as a committee ought to have a joint meeting with the Board of Health about all these things.
And well, as you know, they're meeting tonight, and I think, I'm sure that will be part of their discussion.
Right, but I mean,
we, we will need to meet with them, too. We've got to find sometime we're not meeting on the same night.
Well, or we can meet on the same night and just, you know, have a piece that's joint. But I think, you know, one of the concerns I have in general on this debate about school opening is there's plenty of reasons not to do things. I'm looking for reasons to do things. And in particular with schools, pool testing would be, we're a very good candidate for pool testing, in my opinion, because we, we naturally cohort into classrooms. And we have a low transmission rate. So those are the two sort of hallmarks of pool testing, that you have a low transmission rate and you have a natural group so that you can pool those results. And then, of course, if you have a positive in the pool, you then, you know, bear down. But it greatly reduces the number of tests required. And I'm also very interested in, the window is now in getting a baseline of what's going on today before we start going into school and sports activities. So we have a way of measuring the impact. And thirdly, I would say, you know, there's a huge debate nationally in the president's wing in on this, that are kids, you know, are kids asymptomatic, which they seem to be, and are they transmission vectors, which nobody really knows the answer? And since, because nobody knows the answer, I think it's very important that we establish, you know, some kind of framework where those kids now, if they're co-mingling in some kind of group, again, sports or school or whatever, the impact may not be felt in their own results, but could be felt in the results of their parents and extended family. So I think it's a select board issue that we should take on to drive this a little further. And the window's now, it's not in September, because we need to establish, you know, what to do. So I'm kind of frustrated at the way it's going, and I guess I don't know where to take it, Mr. Lewis. But I, I just, I would like to see us get with the Board of Health and kind of come up with some kind of standard, and let's price it out. And if it costs 100 grand, let's decide if that's something we want to do or not. But we're kind of dithering around, well, we can't do it, it's too expensive, it's too long. You know, we don't really know all that. So I guess that's what I want to say.
Okay, well, we did ask it of the experts, and I told you the response we got, that we don't have to leave it there if we, if you want to hold an emergency meeting.
But I think, you know, there's lots of experts in town. I mean, I don't know what to do with it. We're in an open meeting, we can't rehearse these things, so I'm just putting it out there for comment, but, you know, and Mr. Chief Fisher, I'd be interested in his comment, but I think we ought to, we ought to take a harder look, I guess that's my point.
David, have you had, has the school had conversation with Linda Fantasia and/or the Board of Health around this specific question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm here by myself, I gotta let dogs in, feed dogs, all these things. So yes, they have met with the Board of Health. And I don't know the answer to that specific question, but they don't seem to be that interested kind of in the testing. And, and I find that odd, because, you know, everything, everything else they're talking about with regard to the criteria under which one would re-enter school and when, I mean, there's, there's kind of several sets of things. There's whether you, how you start, you know, what model do you start with? And then whatever model you start with, do you, under what criteria do you pull back and then under what
Right, make a change.
So I give them credit that they're trying to establish a framework, but their framework is all about the statewide transmission and the Carlisle-wide transmission. But we only know that through testing. And again, that's a subset. I mean, if, if it spikes in the elderly who don't have kids at home, is that relevant to the kid situation, you know? So I just don't feel, again, I'm not on the school board, I can't drive the debate through the school board. But I am on the Selectmen, so I'm trying to tee it up here and say, I believe we should have a meeting with the Board of, the Board of Health, and happy to include the School Administration Teachers School Board about, you know, these testing criteria and the, and a method that would be, would give us data. And even if it's a week for results, it's data, you know, and it's trend data. And we can't, we can't have it if we don't do it, right? It's the, it's the, it's the national debate about testing.
Would you like to propose a time and date for the meeting?
What's that?
Would you like to propose a time and date for the meeting?
Certainly, if I have your permission, I would, yeah.
Sure.
I will do that. Thank you.
All righty, anything else for the LEPC? Hearing none, we'll move on to appointment of new employees. First, we'll take up the new police officer, Chief Fisher.
Thanks, all. And I hope you would, you'd consider the letter that I put forward. This is a brief outline. Obviously, the Board of Selectmen enabled me to run a testing process for a vacant position due to retirement from July 1st. And we did post that for a month on Indeed. Received a little over 100 applications either through Indeed, through email, or hand dropped off, and some of them both. From that group, a subset of folks reviewed those. And our interview panel this time included Tim Goddard. And Tim actually helped me vet the, the applicants. And and so between Tim and I and Sergeant Mack of the Police Department, who was on the interview team, we came up with 15 people that we thought were the best 15 applicants out of the group. And I think I have this right, that it was eight men and seven women. In the end, up until like even the day before, a couple, one guy dropped out and a couple of women dropped out. We ended up testing a group of men and women. I think we had either 12 or 13 there that day. And did a written exam. First, an IPMA exam for a police officer. Four people did not pass that exam, but everybody else moved on to the physical fitness portion. And out of that, the interview group interviewed nine people. I was not on the interview group. That was Christine, Tim, and Sergeant Mack. And in brief, one person rose to the top. They did have three people they thought could probably do it and do well, but one was there. All three of them. They're a clear winner. It's a woman I'm familiar with, and I worked with her in Nashua, her name is Carrie Baxter. She's currently the captain in charge of the Detective Bureau at Nashville Police Department. She's worked there a little over 20 years. She's a, she's done both Massachusetts Police Academy, Full-Time Academy, as well as New Hampshire Full-Time Academy. Has experience working in Massachusetts for the Townsend Police Department, as well as the Groton Auxiliary Police. She spent two years with Townsend as a police officer, that's who sponsored her, the Full-Time Academy down there. She has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And that's kind of her in a nutshell. I, I can, I wasn't involved in the interview process this time. But with three people saying that person's number one, I can also tell you that I've worked with Captain Baxter. She's an exceptional person. And is a fantastic police officer. Clearly, she's been promoted through the ranks in Nashua pretty quickly to become a captain. And I would ask the Selectmen to appoint Carrie Baxter as a police officer pending three things. So the completion of her background exam, her physical, and then receiving her certification from Massachusetts, renewing her certification, which I put in the packet that I need at least one member of the appointing authority. So that's any member of the Board of Selectmen, or you can all sign it if you'd like. If we send this to the Municipal Training Committee, they'll put it tomorrow morning, they'll put it on their agenda for two weeks from now. And that's how it's normally done, to re-up someone's certification.
To complete, so pending completing, what was the first item again, sorry?
Background.
Oh, background check, okay, okay.
So I've got to get
For us to back, yeah, okay.
Alan, would you like someone to make a motion?
I was just gonna make it.
Oh, great, go ahead, Kate, go.
Okay. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Carrie Baxter, Nashville and New Hampshire, as a full-time police officer for the Town of Carlisle Police Department, subject to three things. Completing, well, that we complete her background investigation. She completes the pre-employment physical examination, and that she renews her MASS certification.
I hear a second.
Second.
Are there any questions for the Chief?
Sounds great. Looking forward to
These people took their, their, their physical trainer, their physical fitness test up there on the hottest day of the year so far. You have any, you have any questions, she's gonna be able to pass the physical?
Well, that's a different kind of a physical.
Yeah, I understand.
It was quite a day to do the physical. Came out number one.
Wow.
And we lost one of the guys who was a certified police officer, actually didn't even pass. All, all the women, all four of the women were finalists, all passed easily, flying colors.
Fantastic.
Women rock.
Good. All right, any further questions? Discussion. Hearing none, I'll go for a vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, a lo aye.
Alan, I think you're next.
No, it's, oh, it's me, I'm sorry. Louis, aye.
Louis, aye.
And Reid, aye.
I was looking at just David on the screen, and I said, well, that comes before L. Congratulations, Chief. Sounds like a good one.
Thank you, Chief.
And I can, I can come in, I can come in tomorrow morning and sign the documents that you need to get over to the police, the police training.
Can I meet you there at eight in the morning? They would love to have it by 10:00 to get it on their agenda, so that has, has to be posted two weeks out.
I'm up at 5:00.
I'll meet you at 8:00, thanks a mil.
Eight o'clock, got it.
Tim, thanks a lot for your help with this process.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next, the new Council on Aging outreach social worker, finally.
Yay.
Joan, go ahead.
Okay, so just so everyone's clear, this is the new position that we are, we got funding from the Concord-Carlisle Community Chest, and then a town meeting, there was a special appropriation that was voted in. And then we have some funds that we're going to use from our State Formula Grant, which we get every year. So this is a 19.5-hour, non-benefitted position. We were looking for someone with a master's degree. It didn't necessarily have to be an MSW. We already have a licensed clinical social worker, Peter Cullenane. So we were looking for someone with advanced work in a related field to social work, us focusing on the senior population. We got, we've, we advertised on Indeed, on the Mass Council on Aging website, on the Town of Carlisle website, and the Mass Municipal website. We got 18 applicants. And I came up with kind of a screening tool, a rating tool that I ran by the committee. The committee initially was Verna Gilbert from the COA Board, Angela Smith, our Outreach Program Manager, Peter Cullenane, our current social worker, and myself. We were the first committee. So we came up with a screening tool, we rated everybody numerically, and only three people really met the requirements that we were looking for. We did get a number of applicants that did not have a bachelor's, had never worked with a senior, a lot of people that were in the childcare field, a lot of people that looked to us that, you know, from far out of state, that were just flooding resumes anywhere. So when it came down to it, there were three people we wanted to meet. So we scheduled Zoom interviews with the first two. And we're willing to invite them back for an in-person interview. And then with Carol, who is the person that I'm recommending, we decided to have an in-person interview, because she's in Chelmsford, and it was easy for her to get here, and she was comfortable. So we met with her in the Clark Room. And we asked the same questions to all the candidates, and she was really very comfortable. We really thought her answers were thoughtful. They, they resonated with kind of our philosophy of, you know, letting, letting the people you're working with kind of lead and not being too directive or controlling, but really listening to what people are saying and try to help them get to where they want to go. So she was very, she'd been a physical therapist, a physical therapy assistant in the past, and realized in that line of work that she really liked helping seniors and working with seniors. And, you know, people would come in for physical therapy, and then she would talk to them about all these other things that were going on in their lives. And she just seemed like a really thoughtful, bright person. So we were going to invite everybody back for a second interview to meet the rest of the team. But then the other two people didn't really respond. So I think either they had other jobs or they weren't that interested, so they didn't follow up with us. So we scheduled a follow-up with Carol to meet the rest of the office staff, so our transportation coordinator and our two admin people. And they had their own questions for her. They, you know, they came up with their own questions. And I really wanted everyone to feel comfortable, because we're such a small team and we have such small space, that it really is important that it's a good fit. So she did really well. Everybody seemed really comfortable with her. I checked her references. So she was most recently working in Chelmsford at the Council on Aging as a coordinator of their companion program, where she was training volunteers from the community to go into homes where seniors are basically at home and just kind of be a friend, a person that talks with them, a person that just gives them some social contact and something to look forward to. And that became a very successful program. So it ended up that the people going into the houses became paid staff, or, you know, a paid cohort of people. And it was a really nice model for Chelmsford. So I talked to her supervisor in Chelmsford, who said, you know, it's a great loss for Chelmsford, but it's going to be a great fit for Carol. We're so lucky to get her. She's the kind of person that would see a problem and then think of ways to kind of resolve it, really collaborative, just a good person. You could always count on her. I mean, said great things, as did her physical therapy supervisor. So I'm very comfortable with her. Angela and the rest of the team are comfortable with her. You know, so we think that she's going to be a good fit and could basically hit the ground running and start working with kind of the most vulnerable, high-risk people in the community, which was the intention of the position.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Isn't that Kate, or you want?
No, you can go. I just want, I had already taken.
I was leaving it to you, I hadn't pulled it up, but here, let me
Oh, okay, I'll do it then. I just want to make sure how you pronounce her last name.
I think it's Grunich.
Okay, because, all right, there you go. Did you get it?
Okay, yeah. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Carol Grunich of Chelmsford, Massachusetts, to the part-time Council on Aging Social Worker position for the Town of Carlisle.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, discussion.
Sounds like you got a good one. Sounds like you got a good one.
Yeah.
We need her. Let's get her, get her to work. When did she start?
Monday.
Yay, okay.
I guess we better vote her in then, huh?
We better vote her in, yeah, come on, let's go.
All right, I'll entertain a roll call vote.
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, aye.
Louis, aye.
Odell, aye.
Reid, aye.
unanimous. Congratulations, Joan.
We're very excited, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and thanks for doing a great job of recruiting.
Yeah, when you do find out how to pronounce her name, will you let us know?
I will, yeah. What are you thinking, how would you pronounce it?
Well, I don't know, because she's a German speaker, so it could be Grunich.
Grunich.
Grunich, you know, but it might be Americanized and be Grunich.
All right, I will check on that.
Yeah, it's nice to get somebody that knows a few other languages, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, she lived abroad for a while, I think she worked for an embassy. She's got a really interesting and diverse background, which I think, you know, the more lived experience you have, you know, the more you're going to have in common with other people, so.
But you know, the, well, you obviously know that there's that French-speaking group. Yeah, you know, so maybe she can get connected to that.
Yes.
Okay.
All righty. Let me ask if people would entertain switching two items on the agenda here. I know Jerry's sitting here, I'm not sure he wants to sit through the rest of our meeting with us. If we could move the Highland Building up to the 730 point and move the STM down? Anybody have, anybody have a problem with that?
Jerry, was anybody else from MFC planning on coming to attend this meeting? You're muted.
Steve Hinton expressed some interest. I don't, I don't know if he was actually planning on attending.
Would you prefer us to wait?
I think.
Okay, then let's discuss the special town meeting warrant articles. As you know, when we decided to hold our abbreviated annual town meeting, we were, we were looking to keep it as short as possible and met the 51-minute mark, which was a new record. However, in doing so, we deferred an awful lot of items to the fall, when we hoped we would have a much better idea of what the budget might look like. State funding, tax revenues, COVID's extra expenses that we might have. I'm not sure we know a whole lot more than that now. But we really need to start planning for the fall. And I see Victor is on the screen as well, so.
Is that Victor Leant, are you sure that's Victor Leant?
I assume so.
That's some other Victor?
I believe it is.
Victor is that?
Yes. Yes.
It is, it is, I, good. So, and I thought I had printed out the, in fact, I had printed out the, not printed out, but had on my screen today, the original warrant that we had before we abbreviated it. And unfortunately, my computer exploded today, and so I don't have access to that and I wasn't able to retrieve it to, it's on, it's on a hard drive that I can't make go around. So if anybody has that.
I have it, you want me to share this?
Could you share the screen, that would be great.
Okay, let me, hang on, I gotta minimize the Zoom thing so I can find it. Let's see, that was.
While you're doing that, let me ask Victor, Victor, do you, has the Finance Committee begun to address the schedule of how you might like to proceed? Victor, did you get my question? Again, you're muted. We're not hearing you.
Hello?
Yep, there you go.
All right, sorry, had a bit of prompt, the mute, mute button. So, so we have actually have not met formally to discuss the revision of the budget. We actually have a meeting this Thursday. However, one of the things I will note is, if you remember back in the springtime, one of the biggest things that was a swing factor was what was going to happen with the schools and essentially what that would require from a standpoint of budget. And obviously, you know that the schools are still figuring that out and finalizing things. So the plan was that, I think it was next week, Scott Triola would have a meeting with the schools to see where they're landing. We also, I think Tim was going to schedule some time with Concord, FinCom, the Regional School District or Lori, as well as their town manager, to have a discussion. So I think from there, we'll probably have at least some sense of what, some implications, although they may still need to work some numbers out post that. So I think that's one of the biggest swing factors that we see. And I think outside of that is, you know, going back and reconsidering some of the things that obviously we tabled in the, in the springtime. So it will take a few weeks to be able to get through that. And I think that should shape actually a bit in terms of when we actually have the town meeting. Because we certainly want to allow, you know, any other considerations to be made and discussions that we kind of tabled previously to be able to do that. So I think that's kind of where we're at right now. We, we will have a new chair, fingers crossed, in the, in the next meeting. So, not that I don't like doing it, but in two years, I think it's time to hand that over to the next individual. And I think I've identified them, if they don't back out, in terms of a chair for that, and that will happen at this meeting on Thursday. So that's kind of where we're at right now. We'll meet Thursday, based upon what we hear today, and begin to kind of lay out, you know, essentially the timelines. But one of the key things is, I think, within the next week, we'll have, we'll have to try to touch base with the schools and try to begin to get a sense from them when they might be able to quantify a bit of what their, their needs are going to be due to the COVID. I think that's a piece that we're, we're concerned about.
Wayne Davis has said he'd like to shoot for some, somewhere between mid-September and mid-October, does that seem to be doable?
I think September is too aggressive. If you think about when we need to submit, so if you have a mid-September, Tim, you can correct me, we probably have to submit that warrant book within a couple of weeks from, from now, in order to get to a mid-September. So I think sometime in the mid-October would probably be, work a little bit better, you know, from the standpoint of having at least a few weeks. So if you do mid-October, that means sometime mid-September, we'd have to finalize things, which gives us a couple of weeks to get essentially a recommendation, have a chance to review with, obviously, the Board of Selectmen, go back and take any feedback that we have, reincorporate, and then do a finalization before we put it in the warrant book.
Okay, thank you.
And to, sorry, Alan.
Go ahead, yep.
Two quick questions. One is, I think it was at our meeting last week, maybe it was earlier, that we, we had the sense that the state, that the state was going to level fund us at least. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, so from the standpoint of Carlisle, we made, we did not, I think we thought there was a risk to our funding, but a very minimal risk at the time. I think the bigger question for us was the Regional School District. Because from the standpoint of Chapter 70, Chapter 70, at least in the last recession, was not touched, and even at the Regional School District, was only like 2% impact, right? And by and large, I think there are some things within that, that, you know, without, without some type of federal assistance, they're not going to be able to really cut that significantly. The, the substantial piece was actually a couple of areas within the, the Concord budget, which they get, or essentially transportation and circuit breaker. And actually, that, those two contributions alone, you know, the 2% decrease in Chapter 70 in, in last recession, but those two contributions actually yielded an overall decrease in their budget of like 11%. Or not, not their budget, but essentially the revenue. If it wasn't for some federal funding that they kind of were able to secure as a part in, in that regard, they would have essentially lost about 11%. I think they ended up losing about 4% or 5% after they got the, the federal grant money or essentially the assistance money. So I think for us, I think in all of our discussions, I think we thought that Carlisle there was a potential risk from a funding perspective, probably not huge because it's Chapter 70, by and large, what we received. But I think the other piece, which was really the one that highlighted is, you know, what is, what is it going to, what is it going to, what is the, the fall involved? And what is that going to mean? Is that, in some instances, if you've actually read the papers, not necessarily in Carlisle, but just in general, you know, some school districts are going to have, essentially have to hire teachers to be able to run essentially both in-class and as well as to cover off on the remote learning. So that's obviously going to increase budget. Because that was, are more of a concern from a Carlisle public schools perspective. The, the funding piece of it was more of a Regional School District question.
Yeah. And then one other thing, and Victor, or maybe you or Tim can respond on this one. Do we have any sense yet of how the town property tax revenue is coming in, in response to the, the first bills going out?
We do. If, Tom, Tim, do you, do you have the exact numbers?
I, I do not, Victor.
Here, hold on, if you want to hold on one minute, I do have the numbers, but I have to look it up here. My memory is not so good nowadays.
Gee, join the club. I just wanted to say that unemployment in town is still hovering around 10%. Before the pandemic, it was 2%. Went up quite a bit higher, but, and, but went back down to around 10% and it's just not budging off a 10% for the past month or so.
Yep. So here, the way it reads here is, right now, we have collected about 47, 47, almost 48% of the $14 million that we would need for the first two quarters. And last August, so last year, we had 48.8, so about a percentage less. So about a percentage less on $1 million is what, 140,000? So about 140,000 shy. So 1% over the 47 would be what, about 2% or 3% short of last year. Same, you know, same time period, right? And then from a FY20 perspective, that's actually this year of FY21, FY20 percentage, where we posted another amount last weekend and we're still about 156,000 short than last August. So we're still trying to collect for FY20 and about 156,000 behind where we were last year at this time.
Are you saying, Victor, you're saying FY20 sort of delinquent collection? So you're saying we're, there's 156,000 more delinquent collections than there were this time last year?
Yes, yes.
That's a lot.
It is.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying, it's a lot of unemployment.
Is there any way to correlate the 140 that are late with the 150 that are really late? I mean, in other words, the people who aren't paying are, haven't paid for 20 and are not paying for 21, or we don't really know?
Um, Kim may be able to run that, because she can probably figure out who hasn't paid for 20 and then, are those the same people who haven't paid for 21? But I can ask her that question. I didn't ask her that for, for the information.
And I don't recall that we defer tax payments to the end of June or the end of July?
June.
June, okay, so they're, so they should be in.
Yes.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think Jim Dar was the one that pointed it out and I, you know, I actually, I agree with him completely that, you know, I, I don't think this is, you know, the worst that's yet to come.
Correct.
You know, it's a few, right, it is a few cycles in. You know, so we have to be cognizant of that, right? And, you know, I mean, we do want to kind of plan, you know, I don't want to say business as usual moving ahead, but, you know, I, I think we need to sharpen the pencils and be smart, but I also think we need to really start thinking now about contingency plan, you know, what, what exactly are we going to cut if, you know, that 150,000 turns into 300,000, right?
But, but Luke, it's already 300,000. What Victor's saying is it's 150. No, it's 150 late, 160 almost late of 20, and 140 behind on 21.
Okay, and it's 140, but yeah, so we're already at 300.
We're already 300 back. I agree with you, Jim Dar is completely correct.
Yeah.
Those of you who've been around will remember that, and he reminded me of this, that, you know, when I was chair back in the bad old days of 2009, 2010, 2010 was the worst year, not 2008.
That's right. Yeah. So what I will say there, just be, just be careful with those numbers. So the 156 is an absolute number that I'm sure of. The other one, I was just estimating, because essentially, Kim said that, you know, up to now, we've collected 47.7% of X. And then last year, we considered 48.8. I just factored a 1%. I don't know if that's the actual shortfall. I, I think it should be, based upon my math, but I, I'll just double-check with her, but either case.
We should check that, but we should.
I, I want to clarify one thing also about the deferral, because we defer, we deferred the payment of the tax until June 30th, and we deferred assessing interest on any late payments until July 30, 30th. So as long as you made your payment by July 29th, you would get not.
Um, is that, is that right? I thought we had deferred the, the payment until June 1st and there's the, the interest until June, June 29th or June 30th.
Oh, is that how we did it?
Yes, I believe that's the way we did it.
Yeah, so, so there wasn't really any penalty.
I remember there was a, that's right, but it was a double deferral.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, because otherwise, it was going to be done May 1st, yes. So you didn't have to pay it until June, but if you paid it by June 30th, 29th.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, you didn't get assessed a penalty.
That's right. So we would expect the July 1st payment.
Yeah, so with, so even with that, $156,000 short, that's quite a few households. If you figure, you know, at 10, at 10,000 a household, let's say, you know?
And again, I want to be clear, that's a delta number, right, Victor? That's not an absolute number.
So I can read it, I can read it this way, it's like about $156,000 less than last August.
Okay.
For FY20.
Right, so I mean, if you want to just, we can, we can go abroad, you know, for a broad brush modeling perspective, on a $30 million town budget, you know, we're about 1% behind where we were, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and 1%, you know, for towns like us, we run, we run right at a certain sweet spot, right? I mean, it's like the school budget, you know, school budget, wow, gee, they have 12 million, 11 million dollars, what's another 100,000? Well, it's a lot, you know, because you're right at the margin on everything. So I think that your point is well-taken and, or maybe it's Luke's point, that, you know, we ought to start thinking about what is, you know, a 1% cut look like.
Yeah. And the scary part is, you know, the vast majority of our budget is people.
That's right, yeah, that's right. Yep, in terms of the, like, project or other spend besides people, it's, it's not a lot that you can kind of play with.
So Victor, I want to ask you, I want to make one comment and one question. So the question is, I learned this indirectly, but I believe that the Concord FinCom has asked the region to look at a cut of $350,000. And the question is, A, do you know about that, and B, like, what's driving that? Is that similar to what we're talking about here?
Yes, so I haven't heard, you know, from them on that, in terms of, that was actually the, the meeting that, that Tim was going to coordinate so that we can get our kind of discussions around town meeting and other things on the table together.
Right.
Okay, I, I have a question. They asked for a 350,000 cut from their original budget or from last year's budget? Or where's that 350 cut off of?
Yeah, that's a Victor question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll find out in the next few days. I mean, like I said, you know, this, we're just starting this, this engine up, you know, from the standpoint of tapping into it, obviously giving the schools, I mean, the FinCom can ask for it, but the, the region doesn't necess, you know, obviously, the region can take that as a.
Well, they're taking, I think, you know, from my understanding, and I haven't been sitting, sitting in on the Carlisle meetings, I just le, le, have exhausted my meeting appetite, so, in the region, but, you know, it's my understanding that they're taking that seriously and.
Okay.
Say in, in, you know, in partial answer to Kate's question, they're operating on a 1/12, right? They went to.
That's right.
They never submitted a formal 2021 budget and they're operating on a 1/12, which is a level funding as we know. So I'm guessing that the 350 request is a cut.
Yeah, yeah. And what I can do is I can have Melissa, you know, I think we can speculate as to these things and I'm sure that your, your in, information is quite, quite strong in that, but let's get more of the details from Melissa. I'll have her reach out to, to the, the school.
So let me ask, you know, that'll play out however it does and we are the recipient. If it does result in a cut in a, 25% of that, you know, flowing to our town without us actually lifting a finger, but more to the point, the, we, the Carlisle school is now on a, you know, is in a, is in a flat budget compared with last year. And to your, you know, comment earlier, Victor, they're wrestling with. I'm not, it's not clear to me that they would light, alight on a model by next week. What they're going to do is on tomorrow's meeting, they're going to vote the three models that they submit to DESI, the Department of Education, which just says, these are the three plans we're submitting. And then, you know, then, then comes the really hard decision points about where they start, so I, in terms of, I think the thing that we ought to all, you know, get an understanding of is, is in terms of incremental expense that they either don't have or they will incur, if they go remote, there are a bunch of things that they don't have to spend. We already know that from, you know, the, the kind of dialogue we had this spring, Victor, about how much money.
Yeah. That's right.
So that's one item, but then what's really not known, and I don't think the school's really focused on this, is how, well, I don't know that they have an answer for how much incremental funding for PPP, PPE and extra tutors and who knows what that they need. Now, I know that they're applying for, there is some Commonwealth and maybe even federal grant money available for that. So I guess that's a real question you should push back, you know, go back to Scott. And, and, and to just make it extra special, we have a brand new business manager at the school, right? So she has the history that Susan Prey has, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, just point, a couple of points here.
Yeah, those are duly noted. I will also note that it is a little different than the spring because in the spring, it was all remote. And if you do a partially remote, partially in school, you can just imagine, for instance, if you're doing waves of buses going in and out during the day, then you're going to increase your cost for that. So the model is a little different than it was in the spring.
Well, yeah, let me, I can, that one I can actually shed light on. If they go remote, if they go hybrid, excuse me, you won't, you won't have wavehead buses. You will have the regular bus route with different kids on the bus. So Monday, Thursday's one cohort, Tuesday, Friday's another cohort. It's my understanding and belief that they will not need to add buses because per the survey, very many parents will drive their children. And so the children who aren't driven will comport with the requirements of, you know, 19 kids per bus or whatever.
Yeah, well, I'm not getting at the, yeah, I'm not getting at the bus. I'm just saying that, you know, there are some, if you do some of the reading and some, not necessarily this particular school district, but, you know, from the standpoint of the remote, some of them are hiring teachers to be able to do the remote.
I agree, there's clearly more costs that are going to be on the horizon and I, I agree with you. I just think that they haven't really focused on, I don't think they focus on the cost element. They're really on the modeling element.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Victor.
Yep, thank you.
All right, let's move, let's go down through these articles and just see where we stand.
Can, can you see them? Because I can't see what you're seeing.
Yes, we can, we can see, we can see through Article 2, which is, which is just the, the flat budget.
Okay. So where do you want me to go? Is that the budget?
Keep, keep scrolling down. All right, stop. Back up a little bit.
Correct to 3.
Yeah.
One more.
Oh. Special appropriations?
All right, I think, I mean, certainly Article 2 will be on the agenda. We know that. Article 3.
We've already done Article 3, we don't have to do it again.
Correct. Okay. So I'm just going to write down what we have to do. 2, okay, 3 is off. 4.
I think Article, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I think at the town meeting we had in June, we did Article 3, but we funded two different line items. So these are the two that were deferred.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We do have to do 3.
Okay.
Or not, but yeah.
Or not.
Or not is the case medium.
But at least it's something we have to consider in our deliberations.
Yeah.
Right.
Go ahead to 4.
Bond premium.
Seems to me we kind of have to do that, don't we? Let me see. It's housekeeping, basically.
Right.
If we need to do it, we need to do it.
Yeah. 5, we'll have, we'll have some long debate over.
Yeah. That will all have to be rejiggered.
I'm just looking at what we're going to, going to have to spend a lot of time on.
Do you want to go?
Go ahead.
Try, continue?
Yep.
6. Oh, this one, we can talk about tonight when we hear.
Well, part of it, we can.
Yeah. Anyway, yes, well, this one will have to be on in some shape or form because
Right.
we're, we're going to be facing issues.
Yeah, we're going to, well, at least, yeah, I'm looking at things we're going to have to, to allocate time for in our
Right.
meetings between now and town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, Article 6, yes.
Yep.
Article 7.
Yes.
I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, Luke, is, is the CPA working on anything?
Well, so I, I don't think we've reappointed CPA. So if we could actually reappoint everybody, or the new ones, that, that'd be great because then, then we can hold a meeting. It's always hard to get everybody together. And yeah, then we will put out a request for applications. I mean, it'll be a one month turnaround, but so be it, you know?
Okay. Okay, 8, funding for Cranberry Bog, do we know if that's coming back?
Yeah, so that, I'm on that committee too. So yeah, this is actually, it's, it's not actually for maintenance, it's actually to do a notice of intent. And so, yeah, this wording needs to change a bit. Because at, at the end of the day, we need to figure out what to do with that. And, you know, we're just kind of pumping money into it now for maintenance. So this is actually 5,000, it shouldn't, it shouldn't get to that point. That was kind of a high estimate.
Chelmsford has decided they don't need the water, right?
Yeah, exactly, so, yeah, long story short with that, there's Meadows or something on the other side of Chelmsford. Yeah, that, that they're going to tap into now, I guess they're, they're, the Water District is purchasing or has an option to purchase a large parcel of land, 40 acres or something over on the other side of Chelmsford. So yeah, they're abandoning the well at, at Barnes Terrace.
Yeah, very good news.
Good welcome news.
Yeah, it's very good news. Okay. Article 9. Our new town clerk is elected for three years, is that right?
Yeah.
She, she, well, she was, she was elected to a one-year term.
Oh, the one-year.
The last year, the previous clerk's term. So it'll be coming up again.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Well.
But when, when will she be voted in again? Is it September?
Next year.
Next year, yeah. Spring town meeting.
It was last year for, no, okay, so it'll be next May, May to May?
Yeah, yeah.
Or June to June, whatever it was, yeah, okay.
It would be nice if we could take care of this in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would reappoint her anyway or, right?
Right.
Well, if the town passed it, there could be, there could be, we would, would not be on the election next spring.
Right.
Right, yeah, so when, when, when this first went to town meeting and it was Charlene, you know, the idea was that if this did pass, you know, you would appoint the current town clerk and, and you would continue to appoint that person. I would, I would assume we'd do the same for, for Peggy if she wanted it, but.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to get at.
Section 2 actually says that when the clerk's, elected clerk's term expires, they then become the appointed town clerk.
Yeah, okay, so it's written in there, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's important if we want to pass this.
Oh, yeah.
And I guess.
I think that might be a, you know, that could shorten the debate on it too.
Yeah. So, I mean, and I do understand there's reasons not to want to have the town clerk serve at the, at the pleasure of, you know, of another elected board. But on the other hand, I think the job has changed enough that, and, and it's, it, that, which is in fact also demonstrated by the fact it's the only elected job that gets paid a salary that I think we want to have, maybe some, the town would want some more guidance and evaluation of, of a town employee.
Yep.
So, okay.
10.
Selectmen to select board.
11 is.
Hopefully that won't be, you know?
Yep. 11 is a.
Controversial, 11.
Is the same thing.
Yes, the same thing.
Covering all the various bylaws.
Okay, 12, all this marijuana stuff, I think hopefully the Planning Board will be done and ready to come forward with by that time.
Yeah, well, we'll need to, we'll need to communicate with them to
Yeah.
find out where they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To confirm that.
Yeah. So. And, okay, so. The personnel bylaw, the personnel bylaw, that's something we need to be working on and we started, but I think we need to kind of get on our horse and finish it up and, and do it because that, we've been, well, trying to institute more uniform evaluation of employees and things like this. And I think all of that, this feeds into all of that by asserting, you know, who's, what the chain of command is and who will be evaluating, evaluating who and getting that started. So I think that is an important task to finish.
Yep. That kind of came out of our meeting last week, yeah.
Right.
And yes, so I wouldn't like to see it slip until next spring if we didn't have to let it
So, this is, this is a good, I think this is a good one though where we need to figure out, okay, so what is the action that needs to be taken by the Board of Selectmen on that? Or is it, you know, we take one or two of us that work with Tim or whomever on, on that? I mean, how, how do we move forward to actually figuring out what the amendment is?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we, if we get two volunteers to go through them and, and make the, you know, proposed changes, knowing what, knowing what our overall purpose is and our goals, then we can bring it to the full board and discuss it there and maybe put it to bed.
Right. It's actually, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but it has already been referred to our town council who I believe was working on it.
That's correct.
Kind of got derailed with COVID. So it's just, I would say, though, if, if open meeting law allows, that it would be nice to have a couple of us kind of, you know, say, well, we'll step up and make, you know, try to drive, drive this to completion, make sure that, you know, things don't slip through the cracks and that we stand on the, you know, town council and that we do get something to bring forward to the, to the rest of the committee to, to discuss and approve.
Yep. Yeah, we really need, we need some firm stuff to work with.
Yeah.
So do I, does anybody wish to volunteer?
Yeah, I'd be happy to work on this.
And I'd be happy to work on it as well.
Okay, there's two, good. And it's not a majority, so I think we're okay with open meeting.
And, and then, Tim, would you be part of that?
I, I would be and I'll kind of loop in town council who would.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, since.
And this is not something that has to involve the Personnel Board?
No.
Which just reviews positions, et cetera, okay.
Good, thank you.
And I, I just want to mention, since it's on there, number 17, which is the DPW septic system.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I just want to say upfront right now that I, I will recuse myself for this one because we're, it's, it's an arrangement because we abut the DPW and they're going to, you, they're going to use some of our land to, to get the pipes run to where they need to go back there. And anyway, this easement is, is between me and my husband and the town, so just so you all know upfront.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Although, having said all that, it's really a gift from Barney and her husband to the town. It's not like, you know, she's going to gain anything.
They won't, they won't, they won't be able to drill for oil in that place.
Yeah.
Oh, who knows?
Black, black hole.
Hey, we're going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to have them build us a little swimming pool back there.
There you go. Be, be careful what you're swimming.
It depends on where it's spilling from, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so that's it.
Good, so it looks like we've got, the, the, the heavy lifting is 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 and 11 or not.
11 and 14.
Yep.
And, yeah, somebody should check in, or I can do it if you want with, on the marijuana, 12 and 13. I believe that Madeline Blake of the Planning Board is going to wait on that, but somebody.
Okay.
Or maybe, Tim, you want to confirm that?
I can, I can check on that and 15 as well was a planning board article. You might remember them submitting that previously, although the explanation was a little less than clear as to why they wanted it to be a scenic road, but.
Yeah.
Well, I'll check on that one too.
All right.
Not now.
So we have our work cut out for us. All right, any further discussion on town meeting articles?
Mark, could you call the dog?
I have one, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask Alan. So do we have a sense of the, let's see if we're going to, so from the earlier conversation, it sounds like we're going to, we want to try to shoot for agreeing on what these warrant articles are going to include. And then I'm assuming we also need to have had our discussion about which ones we're supporting or not supporting. And all of that needs to happen by the middle of September?
Yes.
Yeah. So.
So I'll try to work out a schedule of when we need, need to meet with the various boards and committees and get them on the agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, to, to make sure we meet those deadlines.
Yeah.
And of course, some of them involve Finance Committee as well.
Right.
Yeah, so I presume there'd be a joint meeting with Finance.
Always several, yeah.
Yeah.
My question is about, you skipped over, Alan, you, you didn't indicate that Article 2, I think it is, was not, like, was not a heavy lift, but.
Oh, I, I obviously meant it was.
So I mean, that's the bulk of it, right? I mean, it would be more money. We, we are, we are presently, I think, I can't remember exactly, but we're basically flat to 20.
Correct.
This, this proposal is essentially flat to 20, but it's slightly different. Is, is this, are the numbers on Article 2 informed by something or is that just sort of a place?
No, they were simply, they were simply to maintain the status quo, but we had more data available.
Okay, that's what was voted in June. Thank you. Got it.
Okay, let's move on. Discussion of our favorite building, the Highland Building. Jerry?
Okay. Well, it has recently come to the attention of the Facilities Committee that there are some safety concerns with the Highland Building. Right now, the building is used mostly for storage by. mostly for storage by the Fire Department and the Council on Aging. It's also used for training by the Fire Department. Our concerns about the building were significant enough that we asked the building inspector to examine it, and he determined that two of the stairways are not in usable condition. There, he suggested that the only, the only stairway that would be used is the front entrance. So the the question is, well, there are a couple of issues. One is, right, right now, we're, we're not sure exactly who has access to the building, and it's been noted several times that windows have been left open that might allow people to climb into the building, which would would be a severe safety risk because the, unless you step in the right places, you're in danger of of falling through. So at the very least, we would like to control access to the building by changing all the locks on it so that we know who is going in and out, and we mitigate the safety concerns of unauthorized people gaining access to the building. There are more significant, significant long-term issues about what do we want to do with the building? At some point, it really won't be safe unless we do something for people to be inside the building at all. We, there, there really isn't any other stored space in town that people can use for the stuff that the COA is storing and the Fire Department is storing. We have no other, other buildings that are available. So I don't think we can just throw people out without fair warning, but we need a long-term plan about what's going to happen with the building. There are carrying costs. We pay for electricity and gas to heat the building, and there are some insurance costs for the building. The fire alarm system is problematical. It has, it fails periodically and parts aren't available. And if we really want to maintain a safe building, we ought to put some money into fixing the fire alarm system. So the question is, what's the long-term fate of the Highland Building? Do we want to put money into it to keep it at least safe for the use of storage? Do we want to phase it out? What, what do we do?
Has the Municipal Facilities Committee discussed this to think about making a recommendation?
Well, our recommendation is at least immediately to change the locks on the building so we we know who goes in and out, and the building is used safely by those people who are authorized to use it.
Okay.
The COA has stuff on the ground floor, and I believe some, some things on the upper floor. And the reason they're doing that is because of humidity issues on the ground floor. In order for them to continue using the ground floor, we would probably need to install a dehumidifier and then move all the stuff back down into the, the ground floor from the upper floor.
Is that something that household dehumidifiers can handle, or is it something we're talking, talking about industrial side?
We're talking about a kind of industrial strength dehumidifier.
Okay.
So so I guess mainly what we're looking for is some guidance.
Well, I think certainly, I think somebody would make a motion that we authorize the MFC to change the locks on the building, or whoever's the appropriate people to do that as a first step. We can take, we take that action right now.
We, I believe we already did that last meeting.
Well, we, we, we voted in favor of doing that. The question.
No, no, I'm saying the selectmen already last, at our last meeting voted to, during, because I reported on during the liaison, and as I, let me see, I have the minutes here, and there was something in there, and there was a motion, and it was voted to tighten up control of the building, and I'll find it in a minute, let you know exactly what it said.
Well, so that's a, that's a short-term solution. We can mitigate some of the safety concerns by controlling who has access to the building. But unless we do something, the building is slowly decaying on the inside and at some point will not be safe for use of any sort.
And is that, is that a topic that the Municipal Facilities Committee is going to address, or are you saying you don't want to handle that? Somebody else do it.
Well, it's, it's not clear what, what it is that you, we would handle unless there's some goal for the long-term use of the building.
Well, a recommendation toward that.
I, I don't see that as part of our, our mandate.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking, yeah.
We have had, when, when was the last study completed? And and the conclusion was that the, you know, there was no viable option that wasn't too expensive. And we also had the issue of it being school property. I, this is something that the master plan is, committee has been looking at, too, and I think it's a really tough decision because to actually, you know, save the structure, which has historic significance, but also make the inside usable. I don't remember what the numbers were, but it's, and it's, it's a very large sum of money. And I know there's some just thought about just tearing the structure down and figuring out what else we could do with that piece of property. Which also involves cost.
Somebody suggested giving the building to somebody if they would pick it up and move it away.
Yeah. So last week's, just to clarify, I'll just read last week's motion from the minutes. It was voted to accept the recommendation of the Municipal Facilities Committee to have the Board of Selectmen control the occupancy of the Highland Building. We, that's already been voted and decided. We could do that right now.
And do we need to, I saw Clyde Kessel's letter, and are, is that something we decide as the Board of Selectmen to allow the continued storage of the COA things that need to be off of the lower level and on the first floor level? And then is the description about entrances? Something we do, or is that something we can just have? I don't know. Tim could authorize, or, you know, how do we, how do we respond to that particular request? Or Joan, I don't know, maybe you have a suggestion you want to offer?
I'm not sure. I saw Clyde's letter. But we went, I went there with the Director of Buildings, and we talked about the whole dehumidifier thing. I mean, there's a few wheelchairs on that first floor that we would have to move downstairs, and he was saying we could go to, you know, Home Depot and get a dehumidifier and explaining how he would drain it. And I mean, he thought that was a doable thing, so we could move the things downstairs. But, you know, obviously, I mean, we have a lot of medical, Clyde knows more than I do exactly what the inventory is. Right, I did, I did go over there with Angela and take a look at it, and we are trying to, you know, make sure everything in there is something we actually would use and we would loan out to a person. But, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what Clyde's letter said.
Yeah. When, when we gave permission for the COA to store things, it was to be stored in the basement, and they had, and they were to be non-flammable things, because that building, if it were ever to go up, would go up like a tinderbox. So, and there were the shelves that were built. And so I would say that things should be kept in the basement for all kinds of reasons. And, you know, and if they can't be kept there because of humidity, then the dehumidifier has to be put in. The humidity is not good for the building, period, because that's what's starting to destroy the, the structure of the building. It's not good for plaster. So I imagine the plaster key, I have not myself been through there, but I imagine the keys are all probably giving way and getting, you know, things falling down.
Re- rekeying the locks is easy, and we can make that happen relatively quickly. But if, if the town wants to continue using the building, then it will require investing some money in it. And the question is, does the town want to invest money in that building?
The last time we addressed that, it was in town meeting. And that was.
And people said no.
People said, well, they said outside, not inside, yes.
Well, but the thing is, you, they have to be asked again because that.
Yep.
That doesn't work.
The situation has changed.
A, that if we were to keep that building, we have to strip it down to the studs, we have to put an elevator in it, and we have to basically totally rebuild it. And there's no parking available, and it's on school grants. So, you know, I, I, part of the reasons that I suggested Municipal Facilities come to the selectmen for guidance is because we can't make that recommendation. Really, it has to be kind of the will of the selectmen and/or town meeting that if they want to, you know, we can't, we can't make any proposals, really, because we have no proposal for what?
Why, I mean, Kate, why can't we?
Well. There are a couple of things we could do. I mean, there, there is completely renovating the building and turning it into something that is an asset to the town as as a useful structure. And another approach is putting money into the building to keep it safe for the current uses that we're putting it to right now. And that would be a much smaller number, but not in, in, not an insignificant amount of money.
Right. So, I mean, that's two of, you know, empty reasons. One is, I mean, we just came off of a period where we talked about percent decline in revenue to the town, three hundred K, and maybe that's six hundred K after the COVID, you know, winds through for a couple of years. At the margins is where the decisions are, and, you know, why isn't one decision, okay, you know, what's the, I mean, the debate we had when, when I was on FinCom, and Jerry, you might have been on then, about Highland, FinCom was again, FinCom was opting for the cheapest possible solution, which was to, to just to take it down. That was the lowest cost solution. Nobody wanted to do that because, you know, you don't want to destroy a historic building, blah, blah, blah. So we go forward, you know, ten or so years, and the situation's still the same, and the economic climate is now also the same, where we don't have a lot of extra cash. So I, I'm not sure that anybody other than selectmen could really finally decide, or maybe town meeting, I guess, you know, should it be just demolished, unfortunately, because that's the lowest cost. And the land is important land, and there's probably something that can be done with it, but that building isn't it. The other question I have for Barney is, is Master Planning going to assess this as part of their process?
No.
Which means also they're not considering it for a community center or some other purpose in their plan.
Right.
So you kind of have an answer, right? The people who spent time studying what we need have determined in several times that Highland can't fit a modern need without just exorbitant cost that approaches the cost of a new building that would be much more useful. So, and then as Kate pointed out, you know, the constraints due to its location are really prohibitive. So, you know, it's not something for tonight, but I do think it's, it is beyond the mission of the Municipal Facilities Committee to determine.
Yeah.
Whether it goes or stays. But I do think it's for us to kind of, we may conclude that it's a town meeting article, but I think it's a debate that the selectmen should have, maybe with Historical Commission and who knows who, RecCom. But, I mean, I think we're going to conclude at the end of that, that there's not a cost-effective use for that building. The only reason to keep it is aesthetics.
So we will, we will proceed by securing the building, but there, there may be a time in, in the not-so-distant future when something happens to the building that will make it unsafe for the uses that we're currently putting it to, like storage. And what do we do then?
I think that David's saying, you know, we really can't keep kicking this down the road.
Yep. I think that's what, I mean, if a Municipal Facilities Committee is asking for the selectmen and slash town to let us know what your plans are for the building, and then we will make suggestions as how do you can get, how you can get there.
And I think we, I think the way to do this is we should appoint an ad hoc committee with representatives from appropriate constituencies in the town to address that and come back to us with a recommendation.
Sounds good. And I think it should have some time constraints on it, and it should be done.
Absolutely.
ASAP.
Yep. Okay, and I will, I will, I will put together a proposal. I'll run it off, Tim, and anyone who, if you have suggestions on who ought to be on such a committee, please let me know, and we'll bring it to the next meeting.
I think, a member from School Committee, a member from us, a member from MFC, is that, you know?
Yep, that's historical commission, perhaps.
Historic.
Yeah.
Yes.
School.
Historic. Maybe if we, maybe somebody from the Master Plan area.
Probably RecCom.
And RecCom, that would, yeah. Fire Department, because they're currently using it, and COA.
Yep.
All right. I will, I'll put together a proposal for, and put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
In the meantime, can the MFC actually get a couple of contractors in there for quotes just to what it would cost to actually demo and remove the building? You know, just so we have that number, you know? Yeah, because it's kind of a little hazardous waste site, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's got asbestos in it, do you?
Yeah, with asbestos and what.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so then, you know, because we're, we're going to need numbers, right? Because the town's going to ask. And I know when, you know, John Ballantyne presented all the stuff, and there were a couple of, I mean, we're talking two to three million, right? And that was, what, five, six, seven, eight years?
Because of remediation, Luke?
What's that? No, that was, that was when, it was the complete renovation. Remember when they were talking about?
Oh, yeah, 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 no, but that's not the demo number, is it? The demo?
No, no, no. So, so, you know, kind of know the, the, the bookends, right?
Right.
You know? I mean, are we, are we looking at, you know, is it a hundred thousand demo? Is it three hundred thousand? Yeah, because it's kind of the same thing with Reno Barn, right?
Yeah, it's in that.
I know.
Got the barn that we haven't taken down. And that's going to be significantly cheaper to take out, but.
Maybe we can get group rates.
Yeah, maybe. In the time of COVID, if people aren't working, you know, that might be.
In the time of COVID, yeah.
Dumpster now. But, but yeah, you know, if, is that something the Municipal Facilities Committee could do, you know, just get a couple of quotes to see?
Yeah, sure.
You know, because if the town does decide to go that way, again, you know, we don't have the excess cash, right? But, but at least we kind of know what we'd be gearing up for, you know, when the time comes. Because, yeah, if it, if it becomes too unsafe, right? I mean, and, you know, it'd be nice to secure it for the folks that are, are using it now. But, you know, I think we got to think a little longer term, you know, just what are we, what are we going to do?
Well, maybe we'll have a hurricane between now and then, and that'll solve our problem.
Bolt of lightning.
How do you make a flood?
One of the high points in town, right?
Thank you, folks. All right, we will, we will carry on. So Jerry, all set?
I think so.
Thank you, sir. All right, go to our item on the fiscal twenty-one goals and liaison assignments. Need to get this done so we can make some progress on other things we need to do.
Yeah.
The.
So, can I, just, just for some history, the, the original list was not, was just kind of everything, you know?
Are you looking, talking about liaison assignments?
Yeah, the liaison assignment. So, two years ago, the list was just a bunch of, just kind of everywhere. And so the list that you have now, that's broken up in departments, boards, and, you know, committees and things, is was already my first attempt at giving some organizations and priority at, or importance. at giving some organizations and priority at, or importance, some sort of indication of importance to some of these things. And when I, when we had made the distribution last year of member assignments, I was trying to balance out what I thought were like the more important ones with the less important ones. So that nobody had too heavy a lift, you know, was going to be having to go to meetings every, every night. So I just wanted to say that. And before, last year, we used to have like 13 each. So I even dropped off a couple. Also, well, there's still, yeah. Still a couple of doubles, I think, but before we had a lot more doubles. Which has also made our list look bigger.
Yeah, so I think for a first run through, if we take departments and just go down and see who wants to do what. Obviously, we try to, try to align these with people's interests, if at all possible, and clearly experience as well helps. But if we can go down, if we can fill in as many blanks as we can, then we can go back and do the ones that we can't fill in otherwise. Is that acceptable?
Alan, I wonder if, if we could talk a little bit about maybe some of the sort of categorizing and you know, as I was looking at this, we have liaisons, liaisons to specific individuals, town clerk, town accountant, finance director. And I would presume, shouldn't the, oh, yeah, we do have the town clerk in here. Okay. Oh, and the town administrator, I'm assuming, or is that, Alan, you're essentially the liaison to the town administrator?
Well, that, that, those were kind of taken care of by the meeting of the finance group, which met on the, on the mornings of board of selectmen meetings. We usually met a couple of times a month in which we would have, there's a, it was the finance director, the accountant, the assessors, the town clerk, the school business manager and a member of the finance committee. And Tim and the board of selectmen, the members of the board of selectmen would meet. And that kind of took care of that big group. And they met on a regular basis.
Yeah. And that has not been happening, right, since?
Not since COVID, but it will, it will go back again. Yeah.
But so, but shouldn't we, I mean, it seems to have, are you saying that instead of having a specific liaison from the board of selectmen to a particular individual that works at town hall, we, we wouldn't need that if we had that ongoing Tuesday morning group?
Yes.
So, so it seems to me we ought to, I mean, even if it's a Zoom meeting, wouldn't it make sense to go back to that?
Well, that's, if, if they want to do that. Tim, is that something reasonable to do? Do you have any intention of reinstating those meetings?
Yeah, no, that, that's an excellent idea. I think things are not back to normal, but things are more manageable these days. We certainly could, could, you know, restart those Finteam meetings. And that does encompass the treasurer and the accountant and audit committee and a number of those financial, and the assessor, right?
And, and school.
A bunch, a school business manager, correct?
School business manager.
And, and so if we, so if we had that, that, that would eliminate some of those assignments under the department's category, right?
Right.
And then the other thing that, looking at this, is that there are a bunch of what I called kind of town hall committees or boards, like the personnel board, the technology working group, the insurance advisory committee, the audit committee, the senior tax advisory committee, the scholarship advisory committee. Do those all need an individual BOS liaison person? Or is it possible to think about having maybe, I don't know, Tim, do you, you tell me what you think about? Would it make more sense for those to fall under your purview and maybe there's somebody from the board of selectmen that is available, you know, to contact if issues come up? Again, I, you know, I was serving on the audit committee and the senior tax advisory committee and the scholarship advisory committee. And I, I never heard a peep from anybody. So I didn't do any on those committees last year. And again, I, if they're all active, what's the way to, you know, we want to connect, obviously we want to have good communication between all those groups and the board of selectmen, but I'm not sure it requires a specific liaison person.
I don't know that it does. Some of them, some of them meet pretty infrequently and maybe whoever, if the chair is, is my liaison, then, then those smaller committees could fall under the town administrator and it could all kind of get covered in that fashion.
Yeah. I, I think what we were talking about last week, though, was in, insofar as communication, those, those committees should have been notified that you're their liaison and then they should be starting to send you minutes. And then if you read their minutes and you see that there's something that, ooh, maybe I should either be telling the rest of the selectmen, or I should maybe, you know, sit in on a meeting and see how they're doing with this. Then, you know, we, that, that's what I was thinking of as one of the liaison functions. Now, they could do that through Tim and Tim can let us know, but I think it's better to have it as, you know, us be the liaison. But then we need to let those committees know, you need to, you know, here's your liaison or, and send, send the minutes, send the agendas and the, you know, invitation to the meetings so that your liaison knows what's going on.
Well, maybe, Tim, that's something where you could provide some information about if they have, which groups are active and have sort of regularly scheduled meetings and which groups are kind of inactive. Like, I don't know if there are any of these that we really don't, you know, that aren't really functioning or maybe have been absorbed into some other committee, but it seems to me we, we, we should take a look at that. Because Kate, I, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly fine on if, if there's a group that's meeting regularly and it makes sense to have a member of the board be receiving their meeting notices and minutes. But that's, that there are certain committees and boards that will fall under that category for what it means to be their liaison. You know, and then some of the others that you described is more, you know, the requiring a lot more time and it's Yeah. 10 meetings, that's a different category.
Yeah, no. I mean, scholarship advisory, for instance, I don't expect anybody to sit in in their meetings.
No.
It would be nice to know that they are meeting when, you know? Because we don't, we don't know, I mean, we don't even know if these guys are meeting, you know, are they doing?
I think in that case, they're down to one member.
Oh, well, okay.
So they need, they need some new blood.
Yeah, so we, we need to have, that's, open the lines of communication. That's what I, I, I think some of these committees need. That's all they need. They don't need to be.
Yeah. So I think before we make assignments on some of these, we, we, you know, that, we need to figure out who's, who's meeting, who's not, what their status is.
Well, we, we, we've got to make some assignments before we can go through 44 committees and get that kind of information from them. What we really need to do is, we, we know some of these are very important now.
Yeah.
Let's decide who those are and make those appointments.
I'm happy to do the appointment ones, the important ones. I, I just think we should also do the other work as well, Alan, and, and not appoint somebody to.
I'm saying they may not need appointments at all, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask a question? Obviously, we know the committees that we don't appoint. We have a liaison in the school committee or but don't we appoint pretty much most of the committees anyway? So if we, if there are not enough people, like on the, whatever was scholarship committee, in that, in itself, we need to know whether there's enough people on that committee, right?
Yes, yep.
And then the other comment is one that Luke made at the planning meeting last week. You know, a lot of it could be shortcut with a conversation with the chair. Like, what do you, when are you going to meet? What are you working on? What are your big issues? And what do you need the selectmen to help you with, right? I mean, you have a 20 minute phone call and you learn a lot, right? Or Zoom.
Yeah.
All right. Let's, let's, let's go down the list, get the big ones done now, and then we can argue over the others.
Okay.
As time, you know, as time permits. Building inspection services. Do they really need a liaison? The building inspector?
Yeah, that might be one of those that, you know, I mean, he's in pretty frequent communication with Tim, right? So, you know, if John ever had anything, I mean, John's pretty self sufficient, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So he probably doesn't, right?
Let's not do that just now. The communication center.
Well, you're the one that was on that.
Yep.
Does that include the, the new phone system, Alan?
No, that's what we're talking, that's the dispatcher.
Oh, whoa, whoa, with the police department.
Right, police and fire.
Oh, okay.
Could we maybe?
Along with police and fire or?
We can do that. If we, if we had a liaison for both police and fire, then it could also do communications.
Yep, yep.
Luke, you up for that? You requested fire.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I honestly, it's probably not going to be a ton of work, I wouldn't think, right? Especially because the new communication system is in place, right? So, so there shouldn't be issues, right? So it'll be working with dispatchers and whatnot, but also the chief.
We just did a contract.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that should be fairly, fairly light, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and that could be split. So, you know, I won't, I obviously won't do police, but whoever else is doing, whoever's going to do police, you know, just assign it to both of us and then one of us can take it if, you know, we don't need two, but, you know, we can have one with a backup.
Okay. Counsel on aging, I'm game to stay with that one. I've got a lot of history with them and they do invite me to their meetings. They're active. They seem to appreciate the liaison.
Great.
Public works.
Yeah, I'd actually like to do DPW if I could.
Anybody want to fight him over it?
Well, I was interested in doing that too, but I, you know, let's see how it plays out. How much, how much you have.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I've, I've got a good working relationship with Gary and I'd also, I have a real interest in, you know, how the transfer station can be revamped and so.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah.
Yeah.
So Luke, are you giving that to Barney?
Yeah, it does. Well, yeah, why don't we see how it shakes out at the end in terms of numbers? And yeah, I, I don't care either way. That's fine.
All right. You've got fire.
Yep.
Finance director, we won't appoint because the Finteam should take care of that.
Who's on the Finteam for the board of select?
Generally, it's been the, the board chair. Close, close to the Finteam meetings. And, and, and the vice chair was also.
Actually, it's been me for the last three years.
Oh, it has? Okay.
Yes, because the chairs weren't doing it at the time. So, and, so I started three years ago, but I'm happy to give it to the chair.
Well, I think it's good, I mean, I think it's good for the chair to do that. And I think it's also good for the vice chair because if the vice chair becomes the chair the next year, it's, a lot of good discussion goes on there that is useful.
Right. Which is why I invited you last year to start doing it.
And I, and I found it very useful.
Yeah.
So we're talking about the FinCom, not the finance.
The Finteam.
This is, this is Tuesday morning group.
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, got it.
So that would be then Alan and Barney.
Yep. And that'll, that'll take care of a number of these individuals.
Fire department is Luke. I'd like to take police.
And I do have the library again. I've enjoyed it. They really appreciate liaison.
So, yeah, they did that one year. It's, it's great.
And we don't need town clerk.
I, I'll do town clerk. Unless somebody else wants to do that. Unless you want to put that with the, I don't know, I think that
With the Finteam, yeah.
That goes with the FinCom. Ken, yes, Finteam. Right, I agree. Okay, so.
All right. Agricultural commission, near as I can tell, they haven't met.
Yeah.
Let's leave them off for now.
Well, they, they came out, they came with their, the right, you know, the right to farm.
A couple of years ago, yep.
Yeah, last year.
Last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
I, I, to me, I mean, we can come back to this, but I'll just say one time, to me, this is, falls under the category of what we were describing, which is where if they do meet, they cut, they let the liaison, the, the contact person know. I mean, I would call it more of a contact person from the BOS than a liaison.
Okay.
Or if they need, yeah, or let Tim know that they'd like, that they'd like some contact. They have a question that the board of selectmen needs to address.
Yeah.
Well, going back to what David said, once these are, these assignments are made, we could call the chair of that particular committee or email them and say, just have a 20 minute phone call, find out what their plans are for the year and to let them know that, you know, if they need any help from selectmen, you're the person to call.
Yep. Okay. Well, I'm happy to keep it on that, under those conditions. Yep. Board of appeals.
You have that one too. There again, I mean, we really don't have any sway or really real relationship with Board of Appeals.
No, it is kind of an important committee though, right?
Oh, it is.
Just, they just don't have a lot of interaction with the board of selectmen.
No, but that, this would be one that I think, you know, we should have liaison and we should make sure we get their minutes.
Well, all the minutes ought to be on the website anyway.
Yeah, no, that's.
Everybody be, ought to be, I mean, the, the, when you, when you go to the website, you can't find anything. And it's a pain in the neck. And all these committees that meet, soon as their minutes are approved, they ought to be put up on the website.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
But you're saying, Luke, you're suggesting we do need to have a liaison for the, the zoning board of appeals, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, or just maybe even somebody who regularly actually reviews those minutes and, and knows what's going on.
That's essentially a liaison, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah.
Anybody want it? All right, I'll keep it.
I, you know, let me see where, where, I, I can do it if you.
Yeah, we, we, final accounting, we can see who's overloaded and who's not.
Right.
Board of assessors.
Yeah, I did absolutely nothing with them. There again, they're, they're kind of a self sufficient group, you know, we really shouldn't have any influence over.
And they, they, they also come to the Finteam.
Part of Finteam.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, Ken did reach out to me once over the, over personnel thing, but, yeah, no, they're.
So why don't we put Finteam group on that one? Oh, Board of Health, that's an important one.
Yep.
I'm okay taking it.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm happy to get rid of it. Public schools.
I'm happy to take it.
Okay. CCHS.
Happy to take it.
Glutton for punishment, yeah.
Yeah.
That's it.
Well, you've got the experience, right? I mean, it's phenomenal.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll stay with Concom. I can say.
All right. Historical commission. I can stay with that. I'm, I'm old.
You're historic?
Historic. When they say, we didn't ever use it that way, I say, oh, yes, we did. Personnel board.
I'll take Personnel Board because I'm going to be working on the bylaw with Barney.
Yep.
So it's me and Barney on the Personnel.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Planning board.
I would like to keep that because I'm working with the planning board on possible reorg of the land use
Yep.
departments. And actually Barney has been involved with that as well.
Master plan steering committee.
Yeah, I can keep that unless somebody else is really dying to jump into it. We're so, so deep into it that.
Yeah, that's.
I was going to say, I think.
A lot of things going on there right now, too.
Yeah.
It'd be good for you to keep that, you know, with the continuity, yeah.
And besides, none of us wants it. And besides, none of us wants it.
And by the way, we'll give you the Highland Building. RecCom.
Yeah, I'll do RecCom, that used to be until Nathan took it from me, I'll go back to, I'll go back to RecCom.
You'll get him, huh?
Yeah.
Audit Committee.
I mean, I did nothing, had no connection with anybody, but.
That probably can be FIN team.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's make that FIN team, makes a big.
That's a question, I, is that a good practice? I mean, the whole idea of the audit is that it's apart from it, right?
Yeah.
But the committee doesn't do the audit, or, I mean, the.
No, but, I mean, the BOS liaisons to FIN team are part of FIN team, right, so.
Yes.
The idea of Audit Committee is oversight on FIN team, so, I mean, I, I would take it if you want an independent look. If you want to combine it, then combine it, but you should think about the, the nature of audit is to look at, apart from the people who taste the sausage, not by the people who made the sausage, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, I, I, yeah, that's a good point, David, you know, I think, um, yeah, yeah, I think, I'm sorry.
And what, what do they do, do they, they pick the auditor?
Yeah.
They do.
Essentially.
I think they.
They don't do an audit.
But I think, don't they review the audit results as well, and make?
Well, we, we do too, yeah.
Yeah.
They work with the auditor, they meet three or four times a year, and they, they work with Clifton Larson Allen on the annual audit.
Okay. So, uh, David, I guess, I guess, yeah. Conservation Restriction Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I'll do that, I, I really, I don't do anything with them, I actually hear everything, everything through Sylvia.
Yep.
With CONSCOM, so, that's an easy one, yeah.
CPA Committee.
Yeah.
Luke, witness your membership. Yeah, yeah, you have, it's a three-year membership.
Yeah, so typically, we do three, yeah, three years, because you don't want everybody coming off at the same time, and they're staggered. So, I think technically, I, I'm on, but it would be the, whoever the BOS rep is through, I think it's 2021, so.
Okay, why don't you keep it then, another year?
Complete Streets.
Yeah, well, that's, that's combined now with the traffic and pedestrian safety.
Right, okay, so that's, that's going to go away anyway, isn't it?
Yeah, let's cross it off.
Deer Committee.
Well, that's going away.
That's probably going to go away.
For this year.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we have, I, I.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't anticipate they'll be meeting a lot between now and town meeting.
Well, no, not this fall, you know, they, they will have to work with some other group, or maybe the Board of Selectmen's. I guess that's what we said when we decided to, we agreed to have it on a town meeting agenda in the spring, a warrant article, that the Board of Selectmen would be appointing a group to prepare that article, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, so this group won't need to do much of anything.
So we leave you there, Barney, for now.
Sure.
Energy Task Force.
Yeah, I'd be happy to work with this group, because I've, I'm also, you know, interested in the household waste recycling and doing the DPW, unless somebody else is.
Yeah, that, that makes a good connection.
Yep. FINCOM.
Well, I like FINCOM, but it, you know, if the Chair feels that it's important for them to be the liaison, I think that also makes a whole lot of sense.
Yeah, and we meet, and, well, actually, I don't meet with the, the FIN, the FIN team has a member of the FINCOM on it, but not the Chair necessarily.
That's correct, they have Jim Dar on it.
Dar was on, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, Alan, you, as the Chair, you want a relationship with the Chair of the FINCOM.
All right, I'll do that, yeah. Insurance Advisory Committee, I'm on that already.
You're a member, is that an appointed member for, for a certain number of years?
It's actually, we, we've got to start meeting right away.
Yeah.
Because that's kind of deadline.
Yes, it does.
So I'll stay on.
Okay, who's the Chair of that?
The, uh.
Treasurer.
It's, it's a.
Treasurer.
I thought it was, okay, I thought that was a working group, because it was a staff-led thing.
Yeah, Kim was doing it, right?
Was doing it, yeah, it's mostly staff, yeah.
Uh, so should that go down to working groups is the question.
No, I think, I think it's actually a statutory committee.
It's a statutory.
It is.
And the Treasurer has to be the Chair.
Just hadn't met in quite a few, quite a long time.
All right, got to get moving.
Yeah. Land Stewardship.
Yeah, it kind of falls under CONSCOM.
CONSCOM again, yeah.
They don't really meet that much either, so.
Long-term Caps.
Well, it says I'm a member, although I thought Nathan was a member, I don't know, that got, that got screwed up last year. I was a member once before, I'm on the MFC, which is also related, so, I guess I'd like to go back on the long-term caps.
Okay.
Because I think it makes sense.
Both of them? Or?
Well.
Or somebody else is going to do MFC?
Oh, uh, I, my, I'm on MFC until 2021, I think.
Yeah, I think MFC, the whole committee's appointed until 2021, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I, I think maybe next year is the year we kind of reevaluate.
Right.
You know, kind of keep everything, because I, there, there are a couple of people who don't come to the meetings anymore, right? So I think, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, I, you know, I mean, unless it becomes an issue, you know, I, I think we need to start thinking now about, you know, not necessarily rewriting the, the charter completely, but kind of restructuring that a bit.
Well, there have been talks, Tim, you, you've been continuing to talk with school about consolidating certain things, and I think that was one of the things. So, we've been kind of wait, I think we need to wait until that conversation happens, so that we know.
Right.
It would be helpful.
Okay, we'll leave you there for the time being, Kate, yeah.
Leave me there for the time being, yeah.
TPSC, Luke?
Yeah, I'll stay on that, at least until.
Until the shooting starts.
Exactly. Oh, it's kind of already started.
Yeah, it has.
I think we should just leave the center like it is, nobody will go over that rumble.
Yeah, just, you know, leave the rebar exposed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly, yes, perfect, yeah.
Yeah, the, not to, I, I won't name any names, but at the LEPC conversation on Monday, one of the lead-up comments was, "Well, at least nobody fell into that big hole in the center of town."
That's right.
A lot of cones and barrels in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any of which have moved.
Yeah, people definitely flipping stuff.
Yeah.
Scholarship Advisory Committee.
Well, we could drop that off the list, obviously, we have really, again, no sway, and there's no, you know, no money involved, really.
It's not a policy committee per se.
Yeah.
Okay. Veterans Committee.
Committee, ditto, right, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have a Veterans Rep, it's really not, unless there's, if, if an issue comes up, like, he can talk to Tim, and I mean, that's really, that's really, we, we're buying those services from another town right now.
Right. Does that make sense to you, Tim?
Sure, no, I think it, it does.
Okay.
Okay, then we got FIN team, so that'll be me, and if Barney, you want to come, well, you're welcome to do that.
Yep, I'd definitely like to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you learn a lot at those meetings, trust me.
I think the Telecommunications Working Group is done, isn't it?
It's, yeah, all but over, yeah.
Yep.
So we can cross that off?
The Technology Working Group, however, is not done.
No, and it needs to get revved up.
Yep, and I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
And Senior Tax Advisory Committee.
Yeah, that works, again, I didn't do anything, they meet, Tim?
They do. They do, that might fall either under whoever has COA, or whoever has the assessors.
That was Alan.
Yeah. I'm, I'm always willing to take a committee that doesn't do anything. I'll take it.
And if, just even if it's a, you know, one of those conversations with the Chair, who's the Chair, Tim, do they have one?
I don't, I don't know who it is at the moment.
Yeah, that's okay.
Might be, it might be the Treasurer again.
All righty, well, I will redo this list, send it to Tim, and he can send it out to everybody, that we can then count up who has what, and if you want to make any changes, let us know.
I have very little, but that's okay with me.
Yeah. But you have some, you have, well, you have some that meet a lot, though.
Yeah, MFC.
Yeah.
Is the biggie, I have to tell you.
Yep. All right, good, thank you. Town Administr, oh, yeah, Town Administrators Report.
Excuse me, Alan, is there anything more we want to do around the goals?
Yeah, and I, I, I was going to write those up and, and give a summary. The, Mark did send me his summary of it, and I just didn't get to that this week, due to a lot of other things, and I actually started it before my computer blew up today, but didn't get it out, so I will have that for the next meeting.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, okay, great.
And by the way, things have already started to happen, which is very, very nice.
How do you mean?
I mean, we're getting early submittal of things for the agenda, we're getting minutes, we're getting all kinds of neat stuff, so. That was a useful meeting, thank you, David.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Um, you skipped over Appointments/Resignations before we get to Town.
Yeah, what do we got there?
Was that, was that the ZBA one?
No, ZBA's been pulled for the moment.
Okay, yeah, they've got other candidates, I guess, that they wanted to interview?
Wanted to interview, yeah. Okay, Town Administrators Report.
Okay, thank you, the first item in my report, I think Barney, actually, this is an item that she had, she had a proclamation, I think.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's great, and it's not very long, so if you don't mind, I'd like to read it, just so it's in the, on the record here. Whereas the Nineteenth Amendment to the US Constitution was ratified a hundred years ago on August eighteenth, nineteen twenty, whereas the Nineteenth Amendment guarantees that in our democracy, no one should be denied the right to vote based on gender, whereas courageous women suffered and fought hard for many years to secure the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment, whereas today, there are many eligible voters, particularly people of color and low-income people, who are denied their right to vote freely and without restrictions. Whereas Suffrage One Hundred Carlisle, Suffrage One Hundred Massachusetts, the Carlisle Historical Society, and the Concord Carlisle League of Women Voters are sponsoring a celebration of the hundredth anniversary of a woman's right to vote in Carlisle, exactly one hundred years since the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment. Whereas this celebration is a way for women and men, girls and boys in Carlisle, to honor the sacrifices and determination of those who fought for women's suffrage. Whereas this celebration is a time to recognize our own civic responsibility to exercise our right to vote. Whereas the celebration is also a time to share our belief that no one should be denied their right to vote, and that everyone should have the freedom to vote and participate in our democracy. Now therefore, we, the Carlisle Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim, Tuesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty, the hundredth anniversary celebration of a woman's right to vote.
That's slightly different wording than the one I had in my packet, but sounds good. Um, great, so I move that Board of Selectmen adopt the Town of Carlisle Proclamation for the Hundredth Anniversary Day of a Woman's Right to Vote.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Anybody opposed? My wife told me no.
What, she told you? Your wife told you, what did, what did your wife?
Do not oppose it.
Oh, oh, I see, yeah. That, that sounds more like it, yeah.
All right, roll call vote.
Arnold, a resounding aye.
Oscar, a lull aye.
Louis, aye.
Ode, aye.
We aye.
Passes unanimously.
And I, you'll, you'll all consider coming next Tuesday, week from tonight, from five to six thirty, up at the Town Rotary, and you will be met by several people in period costumes from the nineteen twenties, and lots of signs and banners, and a really great. Thank you.
You wearing your flapper outfit?
I'm actually going to talk to Kathy Booth tomorrow to get my own flapper outfit and big hat.
There you go. All righty, go ahead, Kim.
Okay, the second item is a request from the Conservation Commission for use of about forty-four hundred dollars from the Wetlands Intents Account to fund three hours per week of the Administrative Assistant for the Conservation Commission. You'll recall that this request is made annually, and it, it funds a small portion of that Administrative Assistant position. We have a suggested motion for you as well.
Someone want to make the motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen approve the use of four thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents from the Wetlands Protection Aid Intents Account for the purpose of funding wages for three hours per week for the Conservation Commission Administrative Assistant.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, a lull aye.
Louis, aye.
Ode, aye.
We aye.
Thank you, unanimous, motion passes. Tim?
Thank you, also attached to my report, you'll see a report from Clean Harbors regarding the July contamination of the town's waste oil collection receptacle at the transfer station, and the cost to dispose of that contaminated oil. The cost was somewhat less than expected, however, it was still eighty-nine thousand dollars, which is a lot of money. Gary intends to take this from the Hazardous Waste Fund, this, you know, hampers his ability to be flexible with that funding this year. I think he was potentially looking at a vehicle out of that fund, but we got to deal with the contamination. Now Gary has shut down the collection of waste oil at the transfer station, and is looking to the Board for guidance on that, he, his recommendation is that we steer residents to regional hazardous waste collection events, or encourage them to return used motor oil to the point of purchase. It's obviously, it was a very costly lesson to learn, and, you know, it's unfortunate that somebody knowingly or unknowingly, you know, put something in there that caused this problem, and also unfortunate that, you know, by the time the tests come back, it's, it's several larger receptacles down the, downstream, and, you know, you've contaminated twenty thousand gallons of oil rather than five hundred.
How do we know it was ours?
They, well, they, they, they have kind of the chain of custody of it, and, and Town Council looked at it as well. They sample, sample it at every point that they collected, and so they know, you know, which samples, you know, popped up as, as testing positive, so to speak, so they, they know, they can determine which pickup had the, had the hot load, as they say.
But they, but they only, but they only want to do the test on the aggregate? Until, so, only if the aggregate tests positive, do they then go back to the individual samples?
I think that's the case, if it, in the aggregate, it, it looks fine, there's no need to go back, but they can, they can determine, you know, who, who contributed the contaminated material. Unfortunately, this time it was us.
Do we know how much a test costs, in general?
I, I don't know that, I can find that out, but I.
I mean, because we could collect it if we test it before we send it, then we know that we're not sending something contaminated. But, on the other hand, I, yeah.
How long have we been doing this, and have we ever had something like this happen before?
Not, not to my knowledge, I don't know, others have been around longer than I have, but I, I don't recall anything like this happening.
This is, yeah, and this is new.
Yeah, it's hard to know where it even came from.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of the risk you run, though, you know, somebody cleans something out, and, you know, they think it's waste oil, and I, I, you know, my guess is it was completely un. And I, I, you know, my guess is it was completely unintentional. But, you know, it's a huge pill to swallow. Yeah, yeah. You know, and technically, when you buy oil, right, you're supposed to be able to take it back, the waste oil back to the store you purchased it from, in the original containers with the receipt. So, you know, there are other means to do it. You know, and, cause I thought, I, I thought what was happening with this was Gary was burning it in, um, you know, his, uh, his waste oil, uh, heaters. But, you know, if, if we're paying to get rid of it, then, you know.
Well, they, they pay us to get rid of it.
Oh, they do.
You should. They sell it. That, that waste oil is used by the trucking industry incredibly.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, if, if it is a revenue stream, then maybe.
Should be, yeah.
Yeah, then maybe we'll look into the testing, and that's a little involved, though, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, it really frustrates me that they, they, they have samples, they collect samples, and then they don't test them. And they, and only test them if there's that, and then, so that, no matter who it would have been, so it was us this time, but it's not just a little problem, it becomes a huge problem, so, um, so.
Well, again, the testing may be expensive, which is why they do it. They, they only test it if the aggregate tests positive.
Yep, that's why I was asking, how much does it cost?
Yeah.
To see if maybe we should be, because eighty-nine thousand bucks buys you a lot of tests.
Yeah. Well, who's the DPW liaison?
Not me.
Barney.
Oh, oh, uh, really?
You know, maybe we should do Barney's. I can be the DPW rep, and you can be the recycling and, and, uh, what was the other one? There were two, right?
Cold Wings Energy Task Force.
Can kind of tag in the DPW, you know?
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Well, well, it wasn't Gary's fault, you know.
Like, like a lot of recycling, which, when you make it more difficult for people to recycle, they tend not to. They go dump their oil somewhere where it's convenient.
That's what worries me. They're not gonna take it back to the point of purchase. I mean, I can tell you, when my husband used to do our own lubes, you know, he wasn't collecting that oil in any cans, that, that, that new cans with receipts, you know? He was.
There's a stump in the yard that is highly flammable.
Well, we weren't, we weren't, anyway, it was in the day when you can still do that, you know?
Well, let's try, let's, actually, it is worthwhile finding out what it costs, because if it's a, if it's a minimal amount, we, we could, we could resume collections here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you're reporting, we obviously are gonna have to pay this bill. You, we've looked into, you know, the liability and why, you know, they didn't test this sooner, where they would let all this oil be commingled before they tested it, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, it'll probably be a bit of a change in practice, right? Cause you send a sample out, you'll have to lock that thing until, right? Cause you don't want somebody adding something, right?
Right, right.
But it is what it is, you know? So.
Yeah.
So you send a sample out on a Thursday, and it's, you know, it, it's closed on Saturday and Tuesday, and it's open the next Thursday.
Yeah, people, people can store their oil for, you know, a couple of weeks.
Yeah, exactly. Well, also too, I mean, people, you know, I've seen more people actually just leave the jugs, and Gary's guys actually have to pour it, right?
They probably still do that.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly. So, I mean, it might just be that they store it for a week, you know?
Actually, um, didn't they used to make you ask somebody to unlock it before you could leave it?
They used to, yeah.
Yeah.
They should, that's another thing, because then you could, it's a little bit like the COVID, you know, when you walk in the door, you ask the questions, where is this oil from? Are you sure it's not contaminated? You know, this, and this, and this. How long have you had it? Where did you get it? You know, cause if it's just something you've, you found somewhere, we don't want it, because it might be contaminated, because you don't know the provenance of this thing. So, um, I think, we could just have a little more control over the, the thing would be helpful, too.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, who, uh, seriously, I, for, to be serious for a minute, then who's gonna figure out the cost of testing?
I can, I'll find out, because, because I send, I send oil in for, for testing anyway, uh, for other reasons, to look at, to look at engine wear in my boat and that sort of thing. Uh, so I'll find out.
Okay.
It's not expensive, well, it's not really expensive, it's moderately, but I have them test for a lot more things than PCVs.
Yeah, but, yeah, okay. I bet you it's not much more than a water test, to tell you the truth.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, we, we should actually find out all the stuff that they test for, though, right? We should do the same tests that they do, you know, cause probably not only PCVs, it's probably a variety of things.
Yeah.
You know, but it's probably a common test, right? If you say, oh, yeah, you know, ABC oil.
I'll find out.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, of course, then makes me say, if that's the case, if it's not terribly expensive, why isn't Clean Harbors either requiring that we test it before they collect it, or, rather than keeping reserved samples, why don't they just test those damn samples?
Yeah.
It's probably cause they, it's probably cause they, they pool a hundred different ones, right?
Right.
So it's, you know, it's, and, and the odds of it happening are probably fairly low. And then, since they're just gonna pass it on to us anyway, right? They save the upfront cost and, and pass it on to the.
Well, I guess we should have known beforehand.
Yeah, it would have been nice, yeah.
Because then we would know more of what the risks that we're running. We're not just running the risk of our little hundred-gallon tank. We're running, now we're paying for twenty-five-hundred gallons, which is, or, or whatever.
Yeah. So currently, the tank is locked?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, now, let's go on to the good news. We did the bad news first, and this is the good news.
We got rid of eighty-nine thousand. We're gonna get how much?
We're gonna get a hundred thousand. After my report, you'll see a word letter from SDOT for a grant for a hundred thousand dollars for design improvements to the curve in Maple Street Bridges. We had applied for this funding about two years ago, about the same time we had applied for complete streets funding. And it was intended to be both designing and construction funds. You know, fast forward two years, the state is, uh, awarding the design portion of the grant to, to a number of towns, including Carlisle. And they intend to fund construction out of a forthcoming bond bill, or that's, that's what we've been told. So, uh, we do, we do have this grant that, uh, would, uh, you know, fund, uh, safety, improvement, uh, design at both of those bridges, which, uh, when last inspected, uh, they graded a two out of, uh, on a scale of zero to nine, as far as, uh, their, uh, safety. So, uh, you know, good news, I honestly, I think most of us had forgotten about the, this.
All except Sylvia.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, she never forgets.
No, Jesus, yeah.
So, uh, we will, we'll get a proposal from tech engineering and, and, uh, see what that looks like. Actually, I, I heard from them today, and they, they thought that, uh, design services would be about eighty-five thousand dollars, and not, not the one hundred thousand that is eligible, but.
And is this a reimbursement type of grant?
I, it, it conceivably, it could be. I, we haven't even gotten the grant paperwork from the state. I think interestingly, the, the state notified the mosquito about two weeks before they notified the town. We were getting this grant, and I got an email, might have been from Mary Lynn, saying, what's, what's this grant? I said, well, I wish, I wish I could remember, but, uh, you know, uh, they kind of got it backwards. But it's good news, so we, we're not gonna say no, right? We're gonna.
Great, yeah.
See where that, where that goes. All right, and then, um, Eversource has informed us that they're withdrawing their application for that grant location on Church Street. And then I've got some of the upcoming meetings, and I'm trying to kind of, you know, figure out the, what'll be on the agenda. I think we're sort of targeting mid-September to finalize a warrant for a special town meeting, if I understand correctly. That's kind of what I was, uh, supposing, for a town meeting, maybe mid-October. I know that, that would make the town clerk very happy with, uh, two elections, one in September and one in November. She, uh, very much would like to see an October special town meeting, if at all possible. Because it could be quite a busy fall, respected the election schedule. But I think, uh, in the October tenth, I just kind of picked the date out of the hat on that one. I'm just, uh, kind of spitballing, uh, as to when that special time meeting. Conceivably, it could, I know the way, uh, it feels that a Saturday is probably, uh, you know, our best option still at this point, so.
Yeah, okay.
Of course, yeah.
It's a Saturday, that's what I was gonna ask, yeah.
Yeah, that's the weekend, Columbus Day weekend, but I guess maybe with COVID, it won't.
Oh, may not, yeah.
The way things are going, they're not gonna celebrate Columbus Day anymore, anyway.
That's true, too. That's true, too, okay.
I think that's all I've got, uh, in my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions for Tim? Hearing none. Uh, approval liaison reports.
Um, I have one, uh, from the Municipal Facilities Committee, um, some good news. The, um, apparently the, um, test samples from the, um, around the, um, generator oil tank that was replaced at the fire department are all testing negative. The bad news is that the guy who did the drilling put his tailings on the other side of the siltation barrier, so now we're gonna have to figure out what to do with that, and if that's gonna be a big problem, so. But at least the good news is that we won't have, uh, a big mishe gosh at the fire department with water, well, contamination for the neighbors.
Just a quick, um, report on the master plan. We're meeting actually tomorrow night and, um, mapping out the sort of next three to six months, um, short run, we're, we're, um, considering, for a very small amount, uh, hiring someone that is, um, has actually been helping the town with the municipal vulnerability proposal, and also does some, is a planner that works for the, um, for a neighboring town, just to, uh, coordinate, kind of what are the different elements that we, that we now need to, that are serious for consideration as, um, key elements of the master plan? And what's the analysis that needs to get done? And are there needs to, um, hire any other consultants? Or is it something that we can do with the skills that we have on the committee or other people in town? And the plan is not to spend or propose any, uh, additional spending of the ninety thousand that's still, available in the, in the budget that the town approved for the master plan process, until well into the fall, when we can take another look at it. And that, and that would, that would come to the Board of Selectmen, if there's anything significant there. Or I guess it is, would go through the Planning Board first. And then the other thing is that, uh, the Master Plan Steering Committee would like to, uh, be on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen meeting, um, at the end of August, if that's possible, to provide an update. Both Madeline Blake, the, the Chair of the Planning Board, who's also the co-chair of the Master Plan, and Jan Corneal, the other co-chair, would be available to come.
Thank you. I've been meeting with the Back to School Committee. Uh, they've been very busy. And, uh, they're putting together their final plans to submit to the state. Jim Shea didn't seem, Jim O'Shea didn't seem too concerned about the Friday deadline. He said, well, if we're not, they don't have it Friday, we'll have it next week sometime. But, uh, they're really trying to get a good handle on, uh, the various, what, what would trigger the various models? Having some kind of, uh, benchmarks for, for instance, how many cases would require a full remote response? If they, if they started going back to school full-time, uh, if they do a hybrid, what would that look like? And if, and part of that is, is, uh, predicated on the number of parents who have indicated they may keep their kids home anyway. And the idea being that if enough parents kept their kids home, that would then make more room in the classroom for better distancing, and might free up teachers to, to specialize in remote teaching, because you might be able to have, if it was one less section per, uh, grade, if they were evenly distributed per grade, and of course, that's the real issue. They would be, they might be able to handle that, and that would also solve some of the transportation issues. So that's what they're working on now. They're meeting far more regularly and, uh, putting things together. I think they met last night, I think they're meeting the school committee, I think it's meeting both today and tomorrow.
Tomorrow at noon.
Yep. So lots of activity going on there. We did, we did have a walkthrough of the school, uh, last week, and, uh, that was very useful, I thought, to get some idea of what, what kind of distancing they can do if they do a full, uh, everybody back to schools, uh, model. Kim, you were there, too?
Yeah, I was there, and, uh, uh, they did all the tests as if, you know, everybody went back to school. And there were some kids sitting in the corner, some kids with the wall right up to here, uh, in order to get that six-foot distancing. So, um, it was not ideal, um, so, we'll, we'll see. We, it's, it's like nailing Jell-O to the wall, cause nobody knows what they're planning for.
Well, but they're gonna have to decide here pretty soon, so.
Yeah, yeah, they will, they will. I, I'm.
Unless, you know, unless, you know, everything goes haywire, and the state simply says, everybody goes remote.
I will come.
Which would be unfortunate for our town, because we really have the ability to have, to open up our schools.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, I, I, I've sat in on those meetings, they're, um, they met last night for quite a long time, and there's another parental survey coming out, um, it's been issued, and the results are expected, I believe, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
To assess, there's a question that Alan raised, like, would you send your kids, you know, would you come in or not? And, but the problem is, in the Jell-O model, you know, a lot of those answers depend on what model they come up with, right? So, uh, there's probably a difficult way to assess, uh, assess it, but the teachers, as represented by Linda Veneria, the President of the Union, expressed a strong desire to go full remote, which I found disappointing, because I think, to your point, uh, we're Carlisle, you know, it's a different situation, and in particular, I think, if we don't do it now, we're not gonna do it for quite some time. It's only gonna get worse in the winter, for a lot of reasons. Most specifically because you can't go outside as much. So, to me, now is the time to make some kind of in-person happen, when the kids learn outside. And also, for the younger children, I think it's a really critical time for, um, them to forge a personal relationship with their teacher at the beginning of their school year. And then, you know, if we have to go remote, then we can go remote, but they would have had a break essentially from the six months they just had of no school, or, you know, no in-person school. And the six months they're likely to have, I think, you know, in the late fall, going into the spring, that again, I believe, will be remote. So I think it's, and I've been urging them that it's incumbent to, as I say, get to yes, and not try to find out reasons to say no. But there is no denying that, you know, there's a strong public health issue there, and, and that has to be assessed, so.
Yeah, well, I expressed a similar opinion to the LEPC today, so.
Very good.
I will say, I want to say one thing, you mentioned that, we mentioned, and Luke and I will work on a liaising with the Board of Health, what I've asked Christine Lear to consider and talk to Jim about, and Linda, is really a meeting where the Selectmen, the Board of Health, the School Committee, the School Administration, and representatives of the Union have a meeting. And in my opinion, I would just pose one question, which is, what do we have to do to have some degree of in-person school? In other words, what steps do we need to take to make sure that it's safe, and people feel, the majority of the people feel safe? And, and especially the teachers feel safe? And why don't we work to that? And understanding, yes, of course, the framework says we'll dial it back if there's any, uh, you know, incidents that, uh, rise above a threshold, and that's why I go back to the testing aspect, you know, because you really need specific data to drive that decision. So she has agreed that she would take that on, so that, that joint meeting may be that big meeting. And, and my further comment, or maybe last comment on this, you know, if at the end of that session we cannot reach a consensus about what it would take to make it safe, let's go remote. But at least then we've, you know, I mean. let's go remote. But at least then we've, you know, I mean, they have these endless models, but if you ask a simple question, like, is there a way to make it safe? And if the conclusion is no, there's no way to make it safe, then okay, you've answered your own question, you know? But right now, we have all these camps and people are getting parked, and I think it's, um, it's sort of devolving, which I, again, I.
Yeah, we don't want to see, yeah.
No, and it's hard to know what, what, what you could do without a vaccine.
Well, you take certain, I mean, we take risks, we all take risks, right? And I guess it's a risk-balancing thing, and so I, yes, of course, that's true, but, um, as I've told people, there are three axes that need to be considered. There's the learning aspect, there's the safety aspect, but there's also the social-emotional aspect of the children. And you have to balance those three, and they're, they're, you know, kind of orthogonal to each other in some ways, so. It's a risk, you know, it's a risk-balancing thing. And again, if the answer is the risk is too great, for whatever, forget all these other things, okay, then that's your answer. But if it's not too great, if there's a way we can do it, Carlisle's very unique in its, you know, small district size and its physical space, and especially in the warm weather, you know, we have an opportunity that almost, like, I would say, no more than a dozen districts in the Commonwealth probably have to actually conduct meaningful outside teaching for a couple of months. That's my opinion only, I'm speaking my opinion, but I, I believe that there's a, a better answer for the first couple of months.
All right. Anything additional? Approval of minutes, go, yep.
This is RJ.
Yes, RJ?
I, uh, thought we were going to understand something about the project, that's why I've been.
No, that's, that's not going to be until next month, next week, next meeting.
Oh.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks from now?
Yeah, because we, because we, we, uh, made a rule a week ago that all, uh, reports and, and documents had to be in at least a week before the next board of selectmen's meeting, so we had to put that one off, because that wasn't ready.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yep. And I will be, now that I'm the new liaison to the technology committee, I will be contacting Tim to get to, get together to, uh, make sure that happens.
Thank you so much. Sorry if I indulged your meeting, but, uh, I enjoyed it.
It's okay, yeah, we do have fun, don't we?
Yeah, we as well.
David Mole, I want to say hi to you. I haven't heard of you, I've heard of you, but I haven't met you.
Hello, nice to meet you by Zoom. Hopefully, we'll have an in-person meeting again sometime and we can.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Very good.
All righty, uh, meeting minutes. Any, uh, edits, any?
Yes, I had some important edits. I had some unimportant ones, which I already sent to, um, Jen, uh, but I have a couple of more substantial ones, so, uh, I'd like to talk about those before we, uh, have a motion to accept the minutes. Um, on the second page, uh, when we were talking about, um, the complete streets project and, uh, for the traffic and pedestrian safety, Luke, there were three points listed here in the minutes, but, and, um, I believe that the board of selectmen requested that the committee review those, those three recommendations. While, while they didn't reject them outright, they requested, you know, them to be reviewed and brought back to us.
Yeah, I think the idea was, at least my interpretation, was that everybody wanted to see how the rotary project was going to impact traffic, so.
Yeah, and I just think that should be noted in the minutes.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, while ideal, it happens before, you know, I, I completely understand, you know, and we haven't had another meeting, but, you know, it makes sense. You know, before you start making all these other changes, see.
Right.
Initial change does.
So, so, so the recommendations after the rotary is completed, is.
Yeah.
Rotary is completed. Okay, and then, uh, after that, um, the other pedestrian safety committee requested the two quotes for the conduits, and there was nothing in the minutes that said that. We did not approve either of those requests. I can't even read my own.
Well, we said, we said, number one, we said if he paid for it, please go ahead and do it.
Yeah, we said specifying, yes.
And then the second one, we did not approve.
Yeah, so I guess I, I thought we could say, we indicated that we might approve any privately funded conduit, but that, uh, we did not approve either specifying financial pressures. And we could approve installation if it's privately.
Right.
Funded. And the last thing, uh, okay, well, that doesn't sound terribly important, but, uh, where we, um, Jen forgot to put our motion to continue the open hearing on this, on the, um, poll, Church Street poll, the next meeting at the same time posted for tonight's hearing. Of course, it's gotten withdrawn in the meantime, but we did have that motion, and I thought it should be included in the, sorry, minutes. So.
And I have one too.
Okay.
On last page, under the last August fourth working session, Mark Way, it's W E Y, is how you spell his name.
I didn't know that. So I move approval of the minutes of, where's my top page?
July twenty-eighth.
July twenty-eighth, as amended.
Play here a second.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Arnold, die.
Oscar, a little aye.
Louis, aye.
O'Dell, aye.
Read aye.
Thank you.
I guess I was going to.
Go ahead.
Well, uh, Jen gave us a list and all the letters that, you know, we got, and I was going, normally, she used to put these up. I ended up printing them out, because I was stupid, but, um, I would say that we could request that she, she doesn't need to send us all the attachments, um, with the minutes. I know she has to, yeah, uh, so that, anyway. I'll be more careful next time and just print from page one to page seven and not all sixty-nine pages of all those letters that I had already read.
Good. And in accordance with our previous discussions, I have a series of action items to enumerate. Uh, I will meet with FinCom, the FinCom chair, in the next week or so, to, uh, work out schedules and when we might meet and what we might cover at, at those meetings. Appoint a Highland task group to look at the future of the Highland building, update the liaison list. Luke and Kate, now that you are official, uh, liaisons to the police department, police and fire, uh, meet with Lieutenant Crowe to work on his contract, and, uh.
So, wait a second.
No, just me.
Okay, sorry, just you.
I'm done with contracts, I'm done.
No, I had originally you down for police, then I realized, okay, no.
No, no, that's good, yeah, no.
That's okay, so Kate, Kate will meet with Lieutenant Crowe.
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, I will meet with the tech group to prepare the report for our meeting on the twenty-fifth, or whenever it is, next one this month. Any others?
Um, Luke and I are going to, um, we're going to coordinate with the board of health, and I, maybe it'll be on the twenty-fifth, or maybe it'll be, this other meeting that I would like to have, which would be a separate meeting with school committee and, um, so forth, on the subject of testing.
Okay. Kate and I are going to, uh, work on the, uh, warrant article around the, um.
Yes.
Bylaw change for personnel.
Right.
Yes.
Just writing these down, good. Anything further? Hearing none, I would accept a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
I just want to say, I'm loving that act and item.
Yeah, me too. That's a good thing to have.
It's great. Yeah. Okay.
Roll call vote?
Arnold, aye.
Oscar, a little aye.
Louis, aye.
With appreciation for Chairman Lewis, who once again comes in under time.
Aye, O'Dell, aye.
Yeah, you notice he kicked a lot of the items off the agenda in order to put there, but never mind.
He found there's a message in my madness, huh?
I'm appreciative of a timely meeting.
Read aye.
All right. Thank you all, have a great evening.
As well, let's not forget Tim, because he does.
Who? Come on, Tim. Hi, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Jen, I think, Jen just got us set up, I don't think she's there.
Oh.
Smart, yeah.
No, no.
Or we put her to sleep, yeah.
Yeah.